Recording in progress.
Good evening, everyone. I'm calling the meeting to order, and before we go on, I will ask the town manager to answer the calls.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As a reminder, this meeting is being recorded and will be posted from the town's YouTube. It is important that those within the room remain quiet unless participating in the discussion, and that those attending over Zoom keep their cameras off and microphones muted unless participating in the discussion. It is important that those within the room participating in the discussion speak audibly into their microphone, and that those attending over Zoom unmute themselves and turn on their cameras. If you are resident on Zoom who would like to make comment, please use the right scan feature. Once you are called, please unmute yourself and turn on your camera. For speakers both in person and over Zoom, please state your name and the street that you live on for record keeping purposes before you make your comments. If this meeting gets interrupted for any reason, I will be able to enter Zoom and send a new link via email. And now coming back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. The first item is consideration of the agenda as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I have a, I have a, sorry, I have a question about the agenda.
Okay, special, sure.
At the work session, we had discussed introducing, I think at this meeting, the safety improvements at two intersections recommended by the Public Safety Committee.
It's, it's on, it's been added to the agenda. It's the item nine of the agenda.
All right.
Well, it actually should be, you should make a motion because it can't, once it's published, you can't do that. You can't, after it's published, you can add it. So why did you put that?
Okay, move that we add the.
Well, I think we have some comments.
All right.
So I moved, I moved to add an agenda item to introduce the Public Safety Committee's recommendations to install extra stop signs, stop ahead signs, and ladder star crosswalks at Cumberland and Warwick Lane and at Dorset and Davenport.
Okay, your second, okay. So is there further discussion on the agenda as amended? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, thank you. The next item is our public comment period. If anyone in the has come to our beautiful. And remember to say your name and your street.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Jeff Lake, forty-five twenty-four Dorset. I'd like to just simply tee up an issue for the council's consideration. You have a one pager. The basic theme here is our wonderful parklands. We have this wonderful oasis within the town that we share with the Somerset House folks. And well-intended folks have been removing vegetation, using pesticides. And I'd like to suggest that the council might consider fostering the notion of forest management plan, empowering the Parks and Natural Resources Committee to perhaps provide guidance and advice. I would just offer a couple of pictures for you to look at, just, just to give a sense as to what the issue is. If you look on the bottom of the first page, you'll see to the left is an area that has been routinely mowed. This used to be forest land. Contrast that to the picture on the right. Please look closer for what's embedded in the middle of the picture. See the buck? You would normally see that, given the understory, but there in many parts of our parks, there's no more understory. It's been cleared. In addition, on the backside, you'll see a picture of the face of the steep slope down the stream. Huckleberry, I'm sorry, honeysuckle is invasive, non-native, but it's been removed. But it's principal vegetation on the bank. So that is the source of erosion control. It's the source of shade for the stream. So I'd advocate that in our forest management plan, if we go to that room, if there's going to be any non-native plant in the lawn, there's got to be a plan to replace it. We can't just indiscriminately take away vegetation. The bottom pictures, this is where we're headed as we take away the understory. We take away understory, we mow the areas. And I think the, the little part at the end of Warwick is a great example. You can't see the sign, but it says forest conservation. That's not a forest. It's a law. So this is the notion of the question that I just like to tee up.
Okay, well, this is outstanding, and actually, we do have, we put money in the budget this year for, for a, for a forest management plan for our parklands. And, and we, I've been working, talking to the chair of the committee that is supposed to review that and all these things. Some of these things we're working with the staff now on. But this is excellent. So thank you.
And happy to be a resource.
And, and well, aren't you on the committee?
I'm sorry?
You're a, are you on the, I'm sure.
No, but I am working with Josh.
Do you want to be, do you want to be on the committee? Well, we'll talk about it. But thank you. Thank you. And I know that you've been engaged, and thank you so very much.
Thanks.
This gives us a good agenda. Is there anybody else? Another thing the committee is going to do is once the, so an RFP, we'll be pulling out, and then the committee will get involved with that and recommend it. Okay, thank you. Is anybody?
No.
Okay. The next item is consideration of the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Yeah, I'll only point out consent agenda is very long, so if you're following along with the agenda, it really begins after that on page two.
Okay, is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The next item. The next item is public hearing, consideration of a spring social event hosted by the youth council.
Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For this agenda item, I will just go ahead and hand it over to the youth council president.
Mayor President. Remember to, remember to introduce yourself with your full name and your title and your street.
There's some teenagers here, maybe. Whoops.
Somebody needs you.
They need to get out. Thank you.
Okay, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. My name is Ari Peters. I am the youth town, the youth town mayor of the town Somerset. I live on Warwick, and with me is.
Good evening. I'm Sarah Yan. I'm the town council president, and I live on Warwick.
Thank you.
So. We are, we are here to host our spring social events. As you guys may have heard previously, I think we just wanted to make sure that we don't clash with currently pre-existing events with maybe expensive events or anything else. So that, but, but in early June on Sunday, we're aiming for. So the first two hours of this event, we are aiming to host a plethora of like different physical activities. That'd be frisbee on the front lawn, basketball, cornball, pickleball on tennis courts, and spike ball, we have demand for this. Just to specify, when we talk about the lawn area or the grassy area, we are referring to the grassy area that is in front of us over here, not the grassy area that is by the tennis courts. So we just want to make sure to specify that. And for the second hour, in terms of food and more socializing, we keep all of the, the physical activities that'd be on this front lawn. If there's, if, if that commitment keeps going, it's like two hours does not include pickleballs on tennis courts. That's more isolated. In terms of food, we want to bring food trucks. We have an RS, we're going to RSVP in that we're going to include like a potluck. Just see if we have demand. There's here numbers, and depending on how hard the budget allows for it, we also want to cater food. So the main source of conflict that we faced in our is the inclusion of pickleball on the tennis courts, and I will hand it over to Sarah.
So first of all, we want to say this is in no way a scheme to try and bring pickleball into the town of Somerset. We simply want to bring, we simply want to have this event that will bring together the town. We have repeatedly been asked why we don't want to host these time, the event on the basketball courts, but this poses a danger if a young child or if an adult has to go on Wisconsin or Little Cumberland to retrieve a ball. And lastly, if there is a demand from tennis players, we will only use two out of the three tennis courts on the day of event to allow players to still come during prime tennis hours. And it will also require, require appropriate shoes that went from the court. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Okay, thank you. The only thing that I, that I want to add to that is that so you do need, if you're going to make a recommendation for food trucks, you need to work with the town manager. And they, they're, they have to get a permit and everything, so they'll explain all that. With that, council president, or are you have any questions?
I've got no questions about the event itself. I'm thoroughly approve them. Delighted that you're going to do this. The one question is the question that I had at the work session, which is that we don't allow pickleball on tennis courts. And we don't allow it for a reason, which is that it's very noisy. And their house is very close by, and the rules of the tennis courts say that. I let it float at that time. Since then, we've had objections from a number of residents, some of whom are here, and including multiple living near the courts, and also from the tennis committee who I know did not themselves recommend pickleball on the tennis courts. So where I stand is I approve it, but I will not approve the pickleball on tennis courts. Stop there and let others speak.
You have any questions?
That's it.
No questions.
That's our.
So are we in a discussion?
Yeah, we're asking, you're asking questions of the.
Okay. I don't have any questions.
Thank you.
Just an opinion.
Kesar Kumar. Just to clarify, you guys originally had a council work session that said two hours for the pickleball. Reduced it to one hour, is that correct? Or was it always one hour?
No, it's still two hours.
Two hours, but one hour, did I hear of one hour for first hour for the pickleball and then the second hour, no pickleball?
Oh, oh, there it goes. First two hours pickleball, and then the second two hours.
Oh, it's four hours?
Yes, four hours.
Yeah, sorry. So first two hours pickleball and.
So the first hour of pickleball, and then the other, like basketball and other long games, and then the second two would be socializing with the food trucks and.
Got it, got it. Okay, that was the only thing I heard. Thank you.
Kesar, where are we?
For the pickleball, for the, the courts and like marking up the, the courts, what is required for that? Is it tape?
Yeah, we use tape at the back. I don't want, I'll be anxious. Any damage, transport starts, just, just tape, we just pick it up afterwards.
Yeah, probably we use masking tape, which isn't very strong, so it wouldn't pick up any tape.
Is there special tape?
Oh, hold, sorry.
Yeah, I mean, is there a special tape?
Oh, we haven't looked into it, but we definitely can.
Okay, I don't have any other questions.
Thank you, Kesar Kumar.
I have a question for the town attorney. Is that, is that now or?
Yeah.
So I think in the work session, I, I asked the question of the liability. And is there, how will that be handled in this particular case? Who is liable if some participant decides to climb a fence and falls off or whatever might happen?
For the whole of that.
In the whole of it, yeah, what's, because I, I saw for example, you know, the liability provisions in the Somerset camp example, but what are the provisions with respect to liability for this event? Thank you.
Sure. So I think as we discussed at the work session, if the council wished, it could have participants sign a release of claims, like is done for some special events at the pool. So a release of claims would require the participant to release any potential claims they may have as a result of injury sustained during the event. You know, absent that release of claims, the town would be potentially liable, but I mean, it depends on many circumstances, including whether there's negligence, whether the, the harm was foreseeable. It doesn't strike me as an inherently dangerous event. Are you talking about climbing the fencing around the tennis courts?
Yeah, I'm talking about climbing the fencing or God forbid, child ran onto the street here or anything. I mean, because it says that, you know, some of the teenagers would be supervising.
Yeah.
I presume that means that some parents are going to drop off their kids and leave them. I don't know what age they will be. So just things like that, anything.
Ask them what age.
Yeah. So, I mean, who, who, who do you anticipate supervising children participating in the event to those have their parents with them?
I mean, you're thinking definitely high schoolers, though younger, probably teenagers with babysitting experience.
Right, thank you.
Well, that can all be put in the, in the motion, whatever restrictions you want to. Okay, I think there are any more questions. Councilman, President, party have more questions?
I have a question. I don't have any for myself, no.
Okay, do you have any? Kesar, how about you next?
I, I think one of the things that you need to think about is actually not having parents drop their children off. That this isn't a, this is a community event for families, not just for children. So I think you need to put a, you know, and you, you need to say that. But also going to, to Ron, Ron, how does an event like this differ from, let's say, July fourth? When we have a big event right out there? We play games.
And what do you mean?
I mean, how does this event in terms of liability differ from when we have July fourth out there?
Yeah, no different.
Okay, Kesar Kumar. I've just got a few facts. Okay. So I have another question. So someone asked you about tape. Could you set up the pickleball like in the parking lot? Is that possible? I, I really don't know. Is that possible? Do you guys open it up?
We didn't.
Yes, okay.
If the parking lot is fully flat.
Oh, that's a good point. It could be.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
As we. So in terms of the tape question, we can use payers tape. So we clearly use that as a symbol to be not aggressive towards a tennis court.
But you, you have to do some modification of the tennis courts for pickleball, I would imagine.
Yeah, we, we, like that, the actual importer of the court and we put tape just to market it out, and that's, that's just how we do that.
Now, in terms of you guys and folks that you know that will be attending, you've played the ball, or, I mean, the others, if sports are, you know, cornball, etc. ones, but you, you, you've played pickleball before, and it's no longer pickleball now?
Yeah.
Okay.
But it's not necessarily going to be competitive, more just a fun event. You come and play thirty minutes, have a good time.
Got it, got it. And, and would it be a, do you think it would be a meaningfully less impactful event if you cut it down to one hour of pickleball?
Yeah, we quite discussed that possibility. We probably will discuss further with the rest of the council on that. I think that pickleball, that, that, the inclusion of pickleball is meaningful. I would like to specify that.
Okay.
Kesar, where are we?
Did you guys look at like, like a volleyball net and like other, you know, kind of athletic activities that people could do, you know, if, if pickleball wasn't able to be a part of this?
I mean, we didn't. We thought of other games such as spike ball or basketball. I guess volleyball, we didn't. Pickleball, we wouldn't, we weren't sure where we could put it. I guess all along, but then it's the same thing of the ball rolling onto the street. So we didn't look into it, but we can also take that into consideration.
Something else to add is that pickleball is a very, we, we found pickleball to be a very accessible sport. And compared to volleyball, I feel like volleyball is quite hard to learn, and it's hard to manage, especially if you're a new player. But I think you, I think a lot of people can pick up a pickleball paddle for the first time and seem to get a hang of it pretty quickly. So we thought that would be a better inclusion of pickleball over, I think, in a sport like volleyball.
Okay.
Is there any last question?
Yeah.
Kesar Khan?
Yes. In the original proposal, I saw that it, it said, if the budget allows, we will provide twelve paddles for those who would like to play but do not have one. So is that still a proposal that the town, town budget for this event would pay for the twelve paddles? Is that, is not there?
I guess we have to talk to the community of Somerset and see if they have paddles that they'd be willing to lend. Yeah, through an RSVP, we should also ask them if they would want to bring food for the lawn. And also nets too. So if people would be able to bring those supplies, then it would be a less permanent thing because the town of Somerset isn't actually buying these things.
Thank you. That's it, okay. So, and now we will turn, see if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak.
I would like to thank.
Please, please. Please come forward. So everybody can see you and hear you. Tell us your name and your street and whatever comment you'd like to make. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Viviana. I'm over screen, and I live on Abingham Street. And I've been a resident of Somerset for seventeen years. And I was very excited to hear that the youth council is trying to put together a new event. I think it's very important to bring many more families and across generations together. And hopefully I love the idea that, you know, it's just for the kids, but it's also a joint event. So I'm very excited to hear that this is on, on the books for planning, and I wanted to take the time tonight to come and express my support for the event and hopefully, you know, I, I think we can make it meaningful. I agree with Ari and Sarah that pickleball is very accessible. Everybody can play, young kids and adults. So I hope that one hour or two hours on a, I believe this is going to be a weekend, it's going to be a super inconvenience for the folks that live on this street and that hopefully, you know, we can, that we can support their ideas and that we can support people living there, and we can, and we can try it. And, and hopefully, I really will ask other of you to, to really consider the idea and let's move on to the next piece of the planning that is, okay, how do we, don't need to get the paddles. Let's go and do a survey or public and provide the support because it's, it's going to take, it's going to take time. So I just invite all of you, and appreciate everybody, appreciate this question about how is this event different from when we do the Fourth of July, from when we rent this, this venue for birthday parties for little kids. I've done, I have three kids that have grown up here in Somerset, and I've done many events here with little kids, with older kids. And there is a, there is a waiver that we can all, you know, and that could be powerful, they sign up as people come in. So I think, I think there's a lot of things that I cover, and I would appreciate you guys supporting the event. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything? Okay, thank you. So now I will turn it over to the council president to lead deliberations and decision.
All right, so where are we? I think all of us like the idea of the event and are support, very much supported. There's some question about liability, and Rowley, I'll start with you. Did Debbie's comment reassure you perhaps that as we do July fourth, without getting people to sign any forms, maybe we can do this without getting people to sign any?
Yeah, I, I would, I'd like to get the town attorney's recommendation on it. I'll just, I'll be interested in what his advice is one way or the other, but I'm comfortable. I mean, I think that if we have, you know, teen nights at the pool and at the Fourth of July, the kids also go and have games at the pool, and we have the swim Olympics and so on. And I'm assuming we don't, well, I'm glad it runs back, but I'm assuming we don't require waivers, you know, people to sign waivers of those events. So if, if that is the norm, then I'm comfortable proceeding, unless the town attorney has strong views to the country. I'm okay with, you know, with not requiring that.
All right, thank you. And I'll bring up the other point that I brought up immediately, which is that we have very clear opposition to the idea of pickleball and tennis courts expressed to all of us by a number of town residents and from the tennis committee as well. Has anybody thoughts on that?
I mean, as a resident on Little Cumberland, you know, people are concerned. You know, I think that there was like, you know, you had mentioned like that this is just the entry back in, because this has already been, you know, done, deliberated, and we all as a town council decided that there was not going to be pickleball made available on the tennis court. So then the second that we, you know, blink, then here we go again. And it's just kind of exhausting to like rehash this over and over again. To me, it seems like it's just a lot of moving parts to get a two-hour on the tennis court. You know, it's tape and buying rackets and, you know, just all of this different stuff. I'm not sure that the event needs it. And, and, you know, I know, I, I speak for my neighbors on this street that, you know, and on Dorset, all the houses that are around this, the tennis courts, and, you know, we already have people that come onto the pickle, to the tennis courts and use it for pickleball, and then residents have to call in the EJ and they have to, you know, complain and, or go themselves to kick someone off of it, which, because the, the courts are not designed right now for pickleball. And so I just think that it, we're just talking out of all sides of our mouth then to just, you know, say, oh, well, you know, here, we're going to allow it for this then, this one time here or there. I mean, I don't really have a problem like with, I mean, I think it's a, you know, a good event and stuff, but it's just, really, it's more the precedent of what we're setting here.
All right, thank you. All the reactions?
Yes, I understand the whole idea of, of opening the floodgates and the precedent behind this. And people, this, this, this topic was litigated. We did this. Yes. And I think what's before us is a two-hour event. I, and I know the noise can be really annoying, but what about the people that live on Warwick and have to put up with the, with the, with the swim team early every Saturday morning for maybe three or four times? We put up with it because that's what we do, and it's longer than the two hours that we're asking this to make. I also say that that it's probably more noise coming from the gardening equipment that's going on here. Every time you knock down one of these houses, the people on this street put up with a lot more noise and a lot more inconvenience. This is two hours, but what I think this really is, is worried about the floodgates. And I don't think we should worry about that. It's up to us, the council, whether we're ever going to allow pickleball on those courts. I think we've decided the answer to that question is no. We're not going to allow it as a regular thing. This is just one event that our youth council has brought us, and we have spent so much time on this. It's a little shocking. And I think we need to support the council, or we need to do this. I think we need to stop talking about it and go for it. And shame on us if we don't improve this, is what I say. I mean, that's, no, I don't think, actually, I don't think so. I think shame on us.
Debbie, Debbie, thank you for your view.
Oh, I'm, I'm funny to hear you.
Kabir, you're the only, only council member not, whoa.
So first of all, I think all of us in agreement that we want the event. So the event is going to happen. The question is really around the pickleball on the tennis courts. I think the, I think it's a very legitimate concern for anyone that living on Little Cumberland across the street from the tennis courts. They definitely don't want pickleball across the street from the tennis courts. If I was living across the street from the tennis courts, I probably would want it either. You know, we, we, we just don't, we don't live on it, so we don't, you know, we're not thinking about it, but as a gentleman, so we've gone through this previously. I think we should actually, I, I sent you guys a resolution, draft resolution out here today. We should probably be very emphatic that we don't want this anymore. And we should pass a resolution that clearly indicates that, because I think there's general anxiety in town that we always look, that, that one event or another will create a bad door to pickleball on the tennis court. So let's be very emphatic about it. I think I'm with Debbie, the two hours for this event. I don't see it as a backdoor. I would love to be supportive of these guys. I think it's a good thing. I wish the tennis committee had also been supportive and we could have made it work, but unfortunately, we didn't go down that path. But I do think that we should, after this, pass a resolution that says no more such activities on the tennis courts, and because I think it makes our neighbors on Little Cumberland very anxious about it. I think the, you have to remember, these tennis courts. Um, I think the, you have to remember, these tennis courts are, and Jeff will remind us, came about because our previous mayor loved. Tennis. And wanted a course next to the town hall. And these are not the ideal location for the tennis courts, you know. And so, they are, you know, they're under depressed, depression, the sound gets amplified, it's not a perfect location. The pool is also not a perfect location for it, but. So. Um, you know, it creates a, a lot of challenges for our neighbors, so I'm, I'm very respectful of that. Because if I was living across the street from any such thing, that would probably get worked out as well. But I think two hours for this event is probably fine, encourage us to really look at that resolution so we can. Assure our um, you know, fellow residents that we're not gonna do this. We're not looking to find a way to get pickleball on the tennis courts, because I think that will send a very strong. Payable message to them, I suspect the tennis committee would probably be favorable. For that reservation as well.
Right, so it sounds like, are you?
A good fight. I think they're prepared to make a motion. Well, that, that's, that is one, one.
Yeah, no, I think um. Uh, I agree with Debbie and, and Kabir, I think that uh. Um, in one time, two hours on a weekend. Is, is not unreasonable. Um, I'm very sympathetic as, as is Kabir, that uh. It's going to be noisy. Um, frankly, the entire event is going to be noisy. If you have had kids' birthday parties. Uh, if you have uh spent any time at the pool on a, on, on, on a nice weekend. Kids are noisy, um, so. Frankly, I think the, the, the screaming and happiness of the children will more than drown out the sound of that miserable pickleball that we hit back and forth. Um, so I'm, I'm, uh, I'm for it, I, I have, uh, I. I also agree, I don't know, I do not see any reason why. Uh, the approval of a single event should be seen as a precedent, the council takes these decisions. Uh, and uh, you know, we, I think at this point. Have no intention of making pickleball an ongoing uh event, I do not see any.
I know, but I want to say something completely.
And uh, so I am uh. I'm, I'm not, I'm not concerned about the precedent argument, um, because I think the council uh will uh. Has made its view very clear that we do not intend to make this a, the tennis court open to pickleball. I also don't think that um. Uh, you know, one-time events are, are, are somehow sending mixed signals about something being allowed or not allowed. Uh, my favorite event of the year is dog swim. I, I've never seen a dog inside that pool. Uh, any, on any other day, uh, running around, so I think the fact that we have that. Uh, so to me, um, we allow late nights at the swimming pool, um. I've never been concerned that, oh, if we have four late nights in the summer. What if next year this, the committee comes back and says, let's have a late. Night at the pool every Saturday and Sunday for the entire summer. Uh, I'm not concerned about that because the council, that's what we exist for, we, we are here to take decisions on that. Last point I'll make is, I am very cognizant of the fact that there have been complaints. About um people playing pickleball on the courts unauthorized. Uh, this is an enforcement problem. Uh, I don't see punishing the youth council. Because we as a town can't figure out how to enforce our rules on the pickle, pickleball on tennis courts. I think we need to separately work with uh the town manager. Uh, to figure out what it will take for the town to enforce its rules uh regarding the tennis courts. Um, I don't see, I, I don't see why another group of citizens has to bear the price for our inability to enforce. Uh, something the remaining three hundred and sixty-four days of the year. Um, so.
And you know, we have, we, we work.
Yeah, so I, and I, and yeah, so separately to those who are listening on the budget discussion, there's already been some talk about how we can improve. Uh, security monitoring there. Um, so uh, I am, I'm satisfied with the answers I've received and.
Alright, thank you, uh, and Kabir, you want to say something else?
I just wanted to say that, I, I obviously I'm agreeing with all of that, but I think that the residents on Little Cumberland and the tennis community folks. Remain anxious about this, so if we can improve our enforcement. If we can, you know, the resolution might be an answer that we are very emphatic that we are not gonna allow pickleball. Separate issue, I encourage us to take that up separately, here, I think we should go ahead and. You know, introduce a motion and move forward, but I, I do think we should acknowledge their concerns. Because we all work for them fast, we can, I think they are legitimate and we should. Build trust that by saying, look, we have, we don't know. Either know backdoor methods of getting the football on the tennis courts, we've gone down that path, this is not gonna happen in our town on the tennis courts. So it'll be good to convey that at some point.
But what I'm gonna do is, is approve, approve an amendment which I think will fail and then we can go to the final motion, I want.
What are you making a motion?
I will make motion.
Send an amendment, he just wants something.
There's nothing on the table.
Yeah, alright, well, I will propose a motion that I think will fail, which is the following.
Well, we can make a motion that will pass.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion, that will pass. I'd like to make a motion that the council approves. The um youth event, including all of the activities that they have suggested.
Okay, is there a second?
I second it.
Alright, and move an amendment to drop pickleball from the event. Is there a second?
Is there a second?
Alright.
Okay, is there discussion of the amendment?
Well, we, we kinda agreed on viewpoints on that, you know.
You know, I heard, I mean, just vote on it is all I'm asking, so that it's, it's, that we've documented.
Okay, so right now, there's discussion on the amendment, did you wanna say anything?
Yeah, I, well, I'll say a couple of things, first of all. There's no shame on us for not allowing pickleball um on tennis courts, because that's what the rules are, pickleball is not allowed on tennis courts. Secondly, to think of this as a one-off event is wrong, because I'm sure if it's a successful event, youth council will want to come back next year to do the same thing, to put pickleball on tennis courts. Third, um, once pickleball is allowed on the tennis court by the youth council, why not have it on July fourth as well, it's a special event? Well, right, and that's the problem, it opens up, okay, so there, we need to think more about being. Not just a single event, but in fact it opens it up to other events, creating more noise. So that, that's the concern.
And then to create a resolution that says we're not gonna do that and we just are doing it, is, seems very um, you know. Talking out of both sides of our mouths, I mean, you know.
Okay, is there further discussion on the amendment?
Yeah, I, uh, my discussion on the amendment is that. This came in front of us, I would like to be supportive of the new council. I do think that we should take action, the resolution is just an idea, we don't need to follow it. What would we need to do to assure that we will not allow. Uh, pickleball on the tennis courts, we should do that, we should take those actions, and what it takes for us to feel.
To not allow it on the tennis court.
No, this proposal, I want to move forward because it came in front of us and I wanna be supportive of these guys, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, is there further, is there further discussion on the amendment?
I'd like to, I was kind of knocked down on my shame on us comment and I would like to address that. What I meant is shame on us for not supporting these kids.
It doesn't have anything to do about, excuse me, supporting kids.
It does, it does, it absolutely does. Well, that's unfair for you to say, you may feel that way, but I think this is all about the kids, I think we need to support them, that's all.
Okay, is there further discussion on the amendment?
Did you get the option? Should we?
We haven't voted yet.
We haven't voted, voted yet on the. I'm saying, is there further discussion amendment? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Of the amendment.
Of the amendment, yeah. All those opposed. Okay, the amendment fails, now the original motion is on the table, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all those.
Sorry, just one. Wait, what, what is the original?
The original is to approve this event with all of the activities they have listed.
That's the text?
That's it.
Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? All those opposed. Okay, thank you. Congrat, where's the youth? Congratulations, you're going through the legislative process.
Now you can go home and do your homework.
The next, the next item is uh the building report. Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, uh, for the building report, I'll turn it to our new permission administrator, Stephen Serko.
I was gonna offer him a seat back.
So I provided the.
We should get a photo of this.
My, my first one that's serving as the town building permanent administrator, it's a little rough here. But I'm excited to, to engage on this and help out the town. I provided the monthly report as usual for everyone, I wanted to just highlight some updates. In the last week since I submitted that, that report. Forty-eight twenty-two Cumberland. Um, I made communications with the, the owners of that house and your architect. To resolve a couple of questions to that floor as expedited as possible. Forty-seven fourteen Essex Avenue. Working with Doug, the, the outgoing town. Building permanent administrator. Who completed the review of the plans. And we quickly and uh, wait, identified, she's required. The contractor has paid the fees. You know, when the town is in the process of authorizing. The town building, they already have the county firm. Fifty-five fifteen Greystone. We're just waiting to get the tree protection pencil removed, that's been done. So the homeowners have to bond back, that project is complete. Fifty-five twenty-nine Surrey, there'll be some discussions later on this evening, there's also gonna be. A meeting tomorrow morning at the, at the house, just take a look at some of the issues, to walk through of. Of issues for the homeowner. And that's all I have, any questions?
Thank you, council president, Bard, do you have any questions?
Uh, it's not exactly a question, um, but. If you look at your report in forty-eight fifteen Cumberland, I'm gonna read the last, the last sentence back to you, I don't think you mean this. Formal acceptance of the new driveway and apron are required by the owners of the neighboring property in order to lose the permit.
Close the permits. Thank you, okay.
Alright. That's it.
Councilor Heller.
I have a question about fifty-five twenty-two Greystone. And I see, you, you, you're talking about the deck and the hardscape, is the hardscape, is that the? The, the um, you know, at the front of the house and the back of the house? Because people are complaining, neighbors are complaining that there isn't any um. Uh, you know, they haven't finished the front of the house in terms of the landscape in the sort of, excuse me.
So. This is, this has been a, a fluid uh application, and I understand that the homeowners, we just saw it, you know, today from the. Architect, the landscape architect, they're updating their plans, yes, they're planning to do landscaping. Front and back, also putting in a um pool. Yeah, a, a small.
Is there a date for that, because people keep asking me and I, I kind of shrug my shoulders and feel silly, I can't say anything.
They, we've formally have, like, they've started the allocation process and now we're waiting for it to come back.
Okay.
So. All I can say is I, I hope to have a better answer by next month.
Thank you.
Or you can get it to her during the.
No, it's okay, I'll come with the next one.
Or if you need, I'll, I'll give you any information to do it again.
Are, are you done, council member?
I am done, thank you.
Councilor Kumar.
Uh, no questions, great to see you.
Councilor Ravak.
No questions.
Councilor Khan.
Yes, I have uh, questions of three, three items here. Uh, I, I'm assuming five-five-two-nine Surrey is a separate agenda item, is that correct, President? I won't, I won't touch upon that here.
Yes, yes.
So, on forty-eight fifteen Cumberland, um. I, I wanted to bring up something that I noticed, there is a tree planted in the town right away. And my understanding is the town code prohibits that. So, I'm just curious as to what. What, maybe this was something that was screwed and, and this documentation, I'm not aware of it, but. The tree is in the town's right of way, so it's. So that's on, on uh.
And tree-related issues should also probably uh. Are better probably answered by the county arborist.
Okay, so that's.
Well, does he, does he wanna answer right now?
Um, I, I can answer it then.
Yeah, why don't you come over here? Train of thought.
I don't have that application in front of me, but I think part of the reforestation plan. That maybe took a tree out. In the right way and then returned one back. I think that was.
I mean, what's, what's, if it's, if, if it's a situation of what's done is done, then, you know, I don't want to necessarily reopen it, but I think as a matter of principle. Um, I think the council needs to be uh a bit more. For lack of any other term, maybe less lenient. In situations where uh homeowners are planting, we have. So many places where trees are obstructing sidewalks. Like bushes are growing into the sidewalks. Um, we're having a discussion on the possibility of extending the sidewalk on Cumberland. I don't know which side of the street Duberry may or may not recommend. Um, but that tree, if, if, you know, I'd hate to have that tree. Uh, to be yet another obstacle at some point.
But that's a violation, isn't it?
Yeah, I don't know, that's, we blessed it, is it a violation, I don't understand very hard words.
I, I don't have the permit.
Yeah, I mean, it's clearly a violation in the sense that it's in the town's right of way now.
No, no.
And there's no, there's no, I don't know if there's a special.
Tree number one.
It's one fifty-five, one B two says you need to have a permit of some kind to do that.
I, I got that as part of the.
And the attorney's looking at us off.
Okay, I think it's.
I've got, yeah, then on, uh, maybe we could just update us on, it says on forty-seven sixteen Fallstone. A notice of violation has been issued, maybe give us an update on where things stand on. That notice of violation, forty-seven sixteen Fallstone.
I can answer that one, I have to um. I would be uh meeting with the homeowner, either, and I'll include Steve on this as well, but. Meeting with the homeowner here in this, we could ask. To discuss the amendment of the violation.
Thank you. Do, do you have any question?
Okay, thank you, thank you, Sarah.
Come back again.
Mister Permanent Administrator, thank you. The next item is town tree removals. So I will um. Read, so we're gonna have a public hearing in consideration of recommendation by town arborist Dr. Feather to remove the town tree located. At fifty-five twenty-one Greystone Street. The tree at fifty-five oh one Surrey Street, the tree at fifty-four seventeen Surrey Street. And the tree at fifty-seven oh six Surrey, Dr. Feather.
Okay, here's four trees, fifty-five twenty-one Greystone, on the grand side, it's red maple, four of the trees. And it's, it's, tree court is dead and not gonna have. Revised, we're gonna replace it this spring.
So. Uh. Why don't you go through all of them and then people can ask questions?
Fifty-five oh one Surrey is a yellow and it's dead. Fifty-four seventeen Surrey is another yellow and it's dead, so which is? Fifty-seven oh six, uh, Surrey is a mulberry. And uh, this tree is between the driveways and I think the volunteer wasn't planted. That's decayed the base and it's leaking out over the street, it's hazardous.
Okay, thank you, council president Bard, do you have any questions?
It's, it's more of a general question, Talbert, are we seeing any pattern to the, the kinds of. Trees, species of trees that are doing well and doing badly in the town, have we learned anything?
You know, you saw there's two yellowwoods on this list.
Yeah.
Yellowwoods are finicky, I don't know why, anywhere I plant them in the community, chit and chase of the village.
Alright.
Some of them thrive and some of them are like being said, like four or five years.
So would you not recommend that we plant any more yellowwoods or is that?
I, I kinda stay away from them now.
Okay, alright, thanks.
Maybe you need to open space, like a park or. That's where I'd be getting.
Alright, that's it.
Councilor Heller, do you have any questions? Councilor Kumar.
No questions, thank you.
Councilor Ravak.
No questions.
Councilor Khan.
No questions, I got the same question as, as possibly Bar had about the fact that. It was the same, looked like the same trees. Pattern there, so I think, I mean. Just as a general comment, I mean, I'm just wondering whether we we might need to now take into account. The changing climate. In deciding what trees to plant in the future because they need to be more resilient as to. I don't know, you have to fill in the blanks. Clearly, something is changing in the in the environment and you probably need to think about it. Trees are hardier in that changing environment.
Yeah, the yellowwood might come under that thought. Um, all the trees you get planted are. Pretty resilient to street conditions. And then there's like a white oak I don't usually plant in a narrow median. I'll give it a wider one just because of the requirements for that tree. But maples um. Little do you know. A canal and dry wet canoes themselves doesn't mean that. So we take.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there uh? Comment or questions from our audience or in Zoom? Counsel, you prepared to make a motion?
Yes, I move that we approve. Uh, the tree removal, the one on Greystone Street and the three on Surrey Street that were described by Dr. Talbert.
So is there a second? I heard a second. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? All those ones, thank you. Next item, public hearing, consideration of a. Permit extension request by Robert Herman. For the property located at fifty-five twenty-nine Surrey Street for an additional four months. And the proposed new expiration date will be June twelve. Of this year. Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the. The permit for the property at fifty-five twenty-nine Surrey has expired, and so the applicant applicant is seeking. An extension. The applicant sent me an email saying that they have around. Two months more work, which includes uh painting. Finishing of the bathroom, putting in the stormwater management system and uh putting in the stormwater management system. If he wants to come, the applicant is here. Or if there's any questions.
He's here in the audience, right? Do you do you want to come?
Like.
Yes, come forward and. Since you're here, you might as well. Take the opportunity to speak. Tell us your name and your.
Robert Herman, five-five-two-nine Surrey Street.
Thank you. And so you, I mean, you. Did you have any comment on the report? You did you want to add anything? Because then people ask you questions.
Well, I came here to see what what you guys wanted to ask me if there's any questions.
Okay, excellent. Counsel President Bard, do you have any questions?
No, I don't have time, no.
Counselor Heller.
Yep, house looks good.
Counselor Kumar.
No question. Thank you for being here.
Counselor Rovak.
Well. I'm confused. Is the stop work order just because they don't have a permit?
There's two issues. Uh, the first one is the stop work order. Um, is the expiration of the permit. The second one is uh what's the mission? Uh, which is what we're meeting outside about tomorrow, which is a potential issue with the fence. And so we'll be meeting about that tomorrow. I can get that up here.
Okay, and that doesn't. Conflict with us being able to approve.
No, they don't.
Okay, okay, I don't have any question.
Counselor Khan.
Um, yes, I mean, I noticed that uh five-five-two-nine is also on um. The the.
Building report.
Building report. Um, so if I understand correctly. From what you just said, uh, EJ, that. The fence code and so on and so forth, that is. The reason for the notice of violation should not prevent us from approving an extension of. Okay.
David, is the town attorney want to explain that?
No, I'm just I'm just understand it seems it's to me, it doesn't quite.
The town attorney explained.
Shouldn't these issues be resolved before we extend it a permit?
Mr. Mayor, I'm I'm not aware of the the conditions of the stop work order. But I would say that, you know, based on what I've heard tonight. It does sound like that that that's something that can be. Remedied administratively that doesn't require the the council to delay its decision on whether the. Permit is extended. The the permit, it needs to be. Extended regardless of what happens on the stop record order and if the stop record order is not abated, you know, it no work can. Continue on the extended permit. If that, you know, addresses council members' concerns.
And you can also ask the applicant or the town manager to. Further.
What I will just quickly clarify is, as the town attorney said. The reason to be the fence related issue is an administrative issue, so. Uh, that's what we're fixing on our end. It doesn't require anything from the council.
So.
My understanding is really that we need.
And and so the um, like the town attorney said, the permits expired, so it needs to be extended. But then the stop um. That doesn't conflict with the stop work order because. Um, even if it's extended, the stop work order is still a thing, basically.
All right, but I was trying to translate that.
Hold on, you'll have a chance to talk. Do you have another question? Because the question was answered. So when you're debating it, you can bring up the other question. Okay, thank you. Are there are there um? Any comments or questions for more?
There's not.
Okay, I'll try.
I have I have I have one other.
Sure.
Point um. I I noticed that there's no house number at the site. If you could just add it to your list of things.
It's it's part of the meeting.
Okay, good. Thank you very much. I have no further questions.
Okay, and is did any? Okay, so now I will turn it over to the Council President to lead the deliberations.
All right, well, I'll propose the motion to approve the four-month permit expansion, extension for. Robert Herman at fifty-five twenty-nine Surrey is for a second, so. Okay. Yeah, I mean, what I was going, what I was trying to say is that we really need to approve this extension just for anything else to happen. I mean, in other words, we've got to get this out of the way so that. It the meeting can happen tomorrow and the work can proceed. That's what it boils down to.
Okay, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Thank you. Excellent. Got all the information I needed. The next item is public hearing, consideration. Of a permit application submitted by Jeff Starkweather for the property. Located at forty-seven twelve Fallstone Avenue. To demolish the existing house and construct a new house. Which would require a demolition permit, building permit, HVAC permit. Driveway apron permit and a tree removal permit. So we will begin the hearing. So today is April seventh, twenty twenty-five. This is a hearing before the Town Council of the Town of Somerset. For the building permit application submitted by Jeff Starkweather. For the property located at forty-seven twelve Fallstone Avenue. The applicants are applying to number one, remove the house, existing house. Number two, construct a new house that includes an attached two-car garage, a front porch, a screened. Rear porch, a rear deck with steps, two HVAC units. And a new permeable driveway and concrete apron. And also to remove six trees and plant six new trees. The hearing will observe the following order. The Somerset Town staff will present their findings and submit for the record a report on the application. Under consideration, then the applicant will present the application or make comments on the report. But next, the Town Council will have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant. Or the staff relevant to the application at hand. Then other interested parties will have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant or present comments to the council. After that, if necessary, the applicant will have the opportunity for rebuttal testimony. After which the public comment period shall be completed and the record closed. And then finally, the council will deliberate. And discuss among themselves the merits of the case, the findings of fact and conclusions. Council may make a motion on a permit decision. If any opposition is presented, the town attorney will be asked to write a decision. And a permit shall not be issued before the expiration of thirty days. Too long a time for an appeal. If no opposition is presented, the town manager will be asked to issue a permit. We will now begin this hearing with a presentation by the town staff finding. Findings or reports, Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, so in December of twenty twenty-four, a Trevor Webb Minute Landing Builders. File a building permit application to Town of Somerset. Um, now that the project has been taken over by Jeff Starkweather, who is uh with us tonight. As the mayor said, the property owners are seeking to remove the existing house. They can start with a new house that includes an attached two-car garage, front porch. Screened rear porch, rear deck of steps, two HVACs, a new permeable driveway and concrete apron. They are removing six trees, but then the proposed reforestation plan includes six trees as well. If the permits are issued, the applicants expect uh. The work to begin as soon as they are able and are hoping to be able to complete be completed by the end of the year. In the packet was the permit administrators memo, conditional letter approval from the stormwater engineer. Town Arborist's uh removal, tree removal permit, tree protection plan. They completed a permit application including. A house number certification form. The notice that was sent out to budding and confronting properties ten days before this hearing. And the site plan and the stormwater management plan. Um, so both uh. This was the project was kind of caught in between. Both Doug uh leaving and Steve coming in. So Doug is on Zoom and it's Steve speaking in person, so. I'm gonna hand it over to Doug first, uh, since he was kind of on this project at the beginning. But then after Doug speaks, if Steve wants to add anything, he can. So uh, Doug, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Welcome back.
No, thanks. I never left. EJ covered most of the high points. It uh, we did check the. Building setbacks and all of them conform to the town code. Uh, the maximum building height. Building coverage, excuse me, is twenty-six point eight percent, which. Is accordance with the county code. And uh, the county has not issued uh the building permit yet. And I recommend approval of the project with a wall check and a height check. At during the project. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Doug. Uh, Steve, is there anything you would like to add? Just.
I just want to echo what Doug said about the. Renovation for a height check and a wall check. This project is being built to within a couple of inches of the. Height limitations and size of that implementation. Just make sure it's actually built or supposed to be built.
Thank you. And then for tree removal, tree reforestation and tree protection, now hand it over to Dr. Talbert Feather at the Town Arborist.
Uh, thank you, EJ. So um, six trees to remove. Um, they're on the land that's attached to the tree removal report. And um. There's two false cypress that are in the foot turn of the proposed house. They're on the two corners of the visiting houses. Uh, six-inch browse repaired in twenty-four condition. There's a red oak thirty inches. It's hazardous, fifty percent of the tree is dead. Uh, crate myrtle twenty inches of the base. It's small and stem. It can't uh, there can't be protected uh too close to the proposed house. And there's one white pine twenty-three inches. That's in the back corner of the lot and it straddles three lots. And when the white pines get this big, they start to. Large limbs break off in wind and ice storms. And there's just hazardous to any of the houses around that sort of like. When a bracketing removal of that tree. Then the. Tree protection plan. Protects the trees in front. And three trees in the back. That people would find important.
Thank you, Dr. Feather. And for the next part of the report, to conclude. I will briefly go over the stormwater management. The letter is not as uh is on the old format. It's put in the bad format that was implemented uh. Over the last month, and that's just simply because unfortunately, the stormwater engineer came down with COVID. And certainly we'll get that into time, so I'll just kind of cover it.
Okay.
Yeah, recover, on the road to recovery. Um. So the primary uh. The primary uh. Method of water drainage is a landscape infiltration. Um, as you can see on the plans, there is a pretty large area dedicated to on the plans. And then there's also two dry wells. On the plans as well. And then. Uh, so. For new conditions, it would um. Make a total area, uh, square feet area of nine thousand two hundred and thirteen. Moving my maps around the plans. And then, so the um. Cubic feet, uh, it was required to capture is six hundred and eleven point forty. And all the uh three methods I previously mentioned, as well as previous papers. In total, captures six hundred and forty-seven point eighty cubic feet. And with that, I conclude the staff report.
Thank you very much. And now, uh, Mr. Starkweather, if you want to come forward, welcome. And tell us your name. For the record, because this is record, by the way, this is recorded.
Okay. I'm actually new. I just moved here in January. No, I appreciate you guys, Harrison, you know, Hilton. And it is the goal of that land, we're coming out easily with the neighborhoods. And so if we open any kind of comments either before or during the process, if we find something. That irritates you, well, let us let us know and it's our goal to resolve that as quickly as possible.
Well, welcome to the land of regulation. And you know our, you know our town managers from our.
Yeah, I know. Well, when I when I saw his number, I'm like, wait a minute.
There you go. There you go. Okay, thank, welcome. Welcome to the discuss. Council President Bard, do you have any questions?
Uh, yeah, um. First of all, I I presume that. Putting the dry wells in the back, there wasn't enough space in the back to do any kind of landscape. Infiltration in part of the site.
The, so we go along a lot of the recommendations that were still in the mirror. On the space placement, so that is.
I I imagine that's what he said, so I accept that. I did walk by the property uh this morning, actually, um. Just after the rain stopped. I wasn't going out in the rain, okay? Um, and I noticed that the landscape infiltration in the front is actually at a low point. In in the yard, there's a real slope in the yard that goes from west to east on it. Um, and so it just, it's the obvious natural place to put it, I think, which is where the water will flow anyway, is what it boils down to. Using that to capture it, is that pretty much what I'm thinking?
Are you talking on the.
Yeah, it's on the east side at the front of the property and it's on the low side of the property.
You're talking on the, as you look at this map, you're talking on the left side?
Yeah.
Uh, that's where the drive, that's where the driveway is.
That on the back, yeah, at the back, right. But at the front, the landscape infiltration is there on the low point.
I wish I could answer your question.
All right. I'll I'll let it sit. I can see it on the, I can see it on the map here. Um, and if you look on age, uh, on the stormwater plan on the map. You'll see your landscape infiltration is on the left there and. And that is the low point in the yard up front. That's. That's all I'm trying to say.
Yes, that is.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood your.
Okay, you're done. I'm done.
Counselor Heller, do you have any questions?
No, I don't know. I don't know when is it appropriate time. This is it to discuss. Julie Greenberg's um concerns.
You can ask, you can ask questions. Now's the time to ask questions of the applicant or the staff.
Okay.
You can bring up her concerns.
Say, you know. Her, she's, she, her concerns with which she recommends. That that. We consider requiring a much larger influence, info, but it's in the word infiltration bed. Um, or a combination of infiltration bed and bed garden. Stretching from the eastern property line to as close to the driveway as possible. At at the expense of a patch of lawn, it seems likely that this bed. Could more adequately store all the runoff from the roof roof front. And better protect neighbors at forty-seven ten Fallstone.
It is my understanding, and I'm not a civilian or expert, but the. Uh, the area on the left where we talk in the permeable driveway. Permeable driveways are 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 meant for absorption of surface material. And that is my understanding what that, I was aware of this concern.
You are, okay.
Yeah, so and so that is my understanding why it is designed. As is the permeable driveway and that to absorb water coming off. Before it actually gets to the. The uh, the area where the the lot goes. But we are aware of that and. But we are aware of that and we know if, if there is an issue, then, and that we see during the, during the final part of the real, we have, we, we do consult with our civil engineer as things arise. Buildings is not always a perfect science, but we.
But is this concern, has it been brought up to the, the engineer?
No, we, we just got this recently and I have not been able to get a, we got, I got a copy of this Friday and not yet.
So I think it's important that you do that.
Yeah, we were intending to do that. I, I discussed it with a few people at the office and we're, we're aware of the concern and acknowledge that concern.
Okay, thank you.
Is that it? Okay, Councilor Kuma.
Well, first, congratulations to the applicants for building home in Somerset. Very excited to give you that.
Well, this is actually, the people that are building are actually live here.
Live here, okay.
And again, that's, I don't know, there's no, uh, in some country, if you want to build on them up, up in here.
Well, I'm delighted that they're familiar.
They're next week, I'd say.
Well, just a clarification with the town manager. Am I correct in reading that the application was submitted in December?
Yes.
So why has it taken so long for it to get to the council?
Mix of things. Part one, there was issues with stormwater. So there's a couple of different irrigations of stormwater plan. Issue two is that both sides of the equation had turnover. We had Doug and this Doug and Steve switch and then Travis Webb and Jeff Starkweather. So those are the primary reasons.
Mine was over town. That was another. And then another one is Washington gas. It all disconnects. They thought they disconnected. All they did was pull the gear. And so we're like, guys, we, Washington gas, I said, we really can't dump the same until you're done. And they kept saying, well, we are done. And then we finally agreed. That the gas is not, it's connected. So even though it's, I'm just screwed. They're having to locate the gas. And that's supposed to be, that is supposed to be happening anytime. Okay, that's, that's the reason our permit is not issued. We have a conditional approval on permit from the county. But we have to have that complete for them.
Okay, that's how it falls.
That's why that permit is not approved.
And I would like to quickly comment on the gas as well. It is, that's taking longer than usual because actually how that particular area is set up is to shut it off. They actually need to temporarily shut off home to another, the gas to another element Somerset, forty seven ten fall stone. Do the residents are here in attendance. So they basically have to get a permit to disconnect from forty seven well, fall stone and in a temporary permit to just temporarily disconnect forty seven ten and install quickly. A new.
Fourteen, forty seven fourteen.
Forty seven fourteen, my apologies. Restore gas service.
Okay, well, that leads to my other question that have you heard from neighbors and on this application and say broader statement you can make about that.
So for neighbors, there is of course the letter from Julie Greenberg and George White. I've heard from the residents of forty seven fourteen fall stone. And then I know that somewhere on Zoom as well, but they have not submitted any comments, I think.
Okay. I don't have any other questions.
And in person here, Lucy, you're gonna ask them.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Ravak, do you have any questions?
Um, so for the, so this is a conditional permit with Montgomery County right now. It's not been officially approved?
It's, it's not officially approved because the gas has to be a disconnect first. Even if motion permit is issued, that all kind of happens sometimes, but we.
And, and their stormwater management review did not require any waiver to not cover all the water?
I'm not clear. I don't kind of. I know that there's stormwater that is submitted.
The stormwater plan was approved by them and the permitting.
I guess I'm not aware of the other.
Okay, I don't have any other questions.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Khan.
Yes, three questions. One is maybe either the applicant or EJ, if you could just explain to me, what is the increase in the footprint of the house? How much increase there is in impervious surface? I'm just curious to understand why dry well two is in the corner there because if I understood Robin correctly, that would be the high point then because it is sloping down. I understand how a dry well is at the highest point of the lot. Maybe I'm misunderstanding something. And my last question is.
Why don't you add a mention?
Yeah.
Dry, dry well locations, we, we rely on the civil engineer for that. And no, in our, in my office, it's a civil engineer. So I just, I don't know how to answer it.
Sorry, may I ask that you speak into the microphone? I really can't hear you on Zoom. The speaker, please.
Okay, I can do that. I'm sending that. I was answering that, that we rely on CPJ, which is our civil engineer to give us guidance on dry wells. And in items like this, and that is, we do not have experts on staff that are particularly, that are, that are professionals in that realm. So that's why we rely on that's our priority service to them.
And I, I, I couldn't, well, I was just trying to answer of its question.
It gets not.
I know, but this is, I would like to get this out, which is that I couldn't see the back. So I don't know the slope in the back of the house.
Well, in regards to the footprint of the house, this, it would be nine thousand two hundred and thirteen square feet. The max building lot coverage. So like what the county allows, how much of the lot the county allows them to build on is twenty six point eight percent. And then it will be, the building coverage will be twenty five point six percent.
But what is the current? And, and I, I see what it is proposed. What's the current size of this house? Before it is demolished.
And I, I can get that information. I didn't have it.
And, and I don't know the.
I do not.
I have, I have a third question, which is probably even more complicated than the first two. And that is, when stormwater assessments were being done in the town, I was under the impression that there was some work done that identified underground streams. There was a hydrological system underground in this town.
Yes.
And while I appreciate the fact that the surface, the, the surface water issues, the storm runoff, et cetera, is being addressed here. What I would like to understand is what data do we have regarding this underground system on Fallstone Avenue? As someone who's lived on Fallstone Avenue for a very long time, this, I, I don't have the map that I know that there is this underground system. It has been repeatedly disturbed by a lot of construction on Fallstone, on Surrey and Trent over the years. And so I think it would be useful for us as a council, if such a map exists, for us to take a look at it again and perhaps have our team just to be sure that there isn't going to be further disturbance because the downstream houses are going to, maybe even one or two upstream houses might be impacted by this underground system. And, and the reason there is, is that as you can imagine, a hundred and fifty years ago, this was just woodlands and meadows. There are a lot of creeks around this area. And so all of those, you know, tributaries of those creeks have been covered over in the last hundred and thirteen years or whatever. So.
Well, let's test.
So I think would be useful just to give that information.
How that issue can be taken into consideration in this case?
I don't think it could be taken into consideration in this case, Mr. Mayor, because the, the current code does not require consideration of, of the underground water table or, or I forget what you what you termed it streams. We just have to. We just have to.
That issue, so you're saying that that issue can't be addressed in this.
Yeah, that, that's right, Mr. Mayor. We just have to decide whether the requisite amount of volume is being treated on the site and whether the proposed treatment, the infiltration at the front west, I'm sorry, front east corner of the property and with the two rain tanks in the back meets the hierarchy of the code, and that is to exhaust all requirements for E S D before you use structural systems. There is evidence presented that based on the small area available in the rear, but in the odd shape of the lot, that environmental site design practices weren't possible in the rear. And that's why the rain tanks are proposed there. But it, it is for the council to decide whether that breakdown between E S D and structural is appropriate. But, but at this point, the code does not indicate we can consider underground streams.
Did you have other questions?
Yeah, no, I mean, far be it for me to, to, to debate a lawyer. And but maybe, maybe you can just educate me a little bit as to why we should not take into account what's in the, in the town code. It says here that, you know, we have a responsibility to protect, maintain and enhance public safety, health and welfare. We have to ensure the safety to life and property from all hazards, incident to the design, erection, repair, removal and demolition of buildings. There's a sentence referring to reducing stream channel erosion, pollution, siltation, sedimentation and local flooding. So I think that, yeah, so I think for me, I understand that there's very specific language on stormwater flooding issue, but there's, there's enough in the code that would seem to suggest that the council should do due diligence to make sure that what it approves doesn't result in flooding through other means other than stormwater downstream.
Sure. So the council has debated this issue in the past in connection with other applications. And I would summarize the prior discussions as follows. What you're reading from is in the code, in the intents and purposes provision, which serves as a preamble to the substantive regulations. So that provision provides an explanation of why the council has adopted ordinances that follow. And if there is an interpretation question with respect to a substantive provision, you can look back at the intents and purposes to help you interpret the substantive requirement. But it's, it's, it's difficult to require things that go beyond the substantive requirements. And when I say substantive requirements and we have setbacks, you know, they are objective and easily applied. And case law and common law instructs us that we have to provide equal protection and due process to building permit applicants. There has to be a reasonable understanding as to what's required when an applicant draws up their plans and comes in for a permit. And we basically cannot deny a permit that would be granted to one applicant, but not another applicant because in the latter case, there's been an objection from a neighbor. The code requirements have to be applied consistently and fairly, you know, irrespective as to whether an aspect of the construction is, is offensive to a neighbor. And for example, just making this very simple, you know, we, we generally regulate setbacks to preserve the uniformity of setbacks between houses, the flow of light and air. Let's say someone wants to put a, you know, a pink door on the house. We, we don't regulate the color of doors. A neighbor comes in and says, I don't like this color. It, you know, conflicts with the character of the neighborhood. And that's something that you town, you do regulate. You regulate preservation of character neighborhood. But we don't have an actual substantive requirement on the color of doors. And so it would be unfair in that instance to tell that neighbor, I'm sorry, to tell that applicant, you can't have a pink door because the neighbors objected and we agree that, you know, it wouldn't be consistent with the character of the neighborhood. Stormwater, you know, obviously very different. But again, in, in providing equal protection and, and due process, we've got a code that says, here's what you have to do to comply with our stormwater regulations. You have to treat the, you know, volume of runoff for a one year storm event. And here's how you do that. You apply, you know, environmental site design according to the Maryland design manual to the maximum extent practical. And you try and do environmental design first to infiltrate naturally. Theory with the substantive requirements. We don't know what's going on underneath the ground. And so we want you to do something more. It's potentially problematic because again, not expressly required by the code and may result in the different treatment for different applicants. Did you have any? So I'm going to run through the council, council president Vardy, do you want to ask another question?
I, I don't need to ask any more questions.
Okay, Councilor Hallar.
No, they don't have any questions.
Councilor Kular.
Questions, thank you.
Councilor Ravak.
No questions.
Okay, thank you. So now, is it an opportunity for anyone in the audience who wanted to comment or ask a question?
Yeah, I, I have a question. Can you, can you guys hear me? We're going to do leaders in person comments first, and then we'll come in. I'll ask for Zoom comments.
Okay.
Hi, good evening, everybody here in the county.
Yeah.
We are Audrey and David Levis County. We live at forty seven fourteen Fallstone. We have five questions related to this project at forty seven. According to the builder's. Up to four units of large property is currently on the forty seven inch bell side of our fence dividing the properties. So our question is, is the builder planning to erect a new fence on our side of the lot?
Thank you for, I don't have that information with me because we, we do have a, a, I just saw some fencing. I could, would be happy to get back with you on that, but I didn't tell.
Well, we, I think we would like you to get back to the council and us.
Okay, well, the council will take that into consideration.
According to the memorandum, we received about forty seven inch above on page two regarding permits. The box pertaining to fences is not checked and the cabinet permit column says possibly. What determines whether a permit is required or not? More clear on the word possibly.
So maybe the terms for it. Yes. So you're talking about the building application.
Be wrong with all the checkboxes.
So yeah, is, is a fence proposed? Because I, I don't see the fence listed in the building administrators' report as to being part of an application.
It's not checked.
So, and, and, Mr. Mayor, can we ask Mr. Starkweather, whether you, are you proposing any fencing?
But I just, I didn't have the information in front of me right at this moment, and I, I would be happy to get back with, I'd get back with EJ.
Okay. Uh, yeah, go ahead.
Doug, are there any fences shown on the plan or new fences shown on the plans at all? Or Steve can answer as well.
I, I don't believe there are any fences shown on.
Well, the only fences are fences.
Right.
Yeah.
But for them.
But yeah, the fence. Sorry. The, the box for fences is not checked.
Right.
So.
And it says possibly that the permit. So we're wondering what's, what's the possibly?
Ah, ah, got it. Now I understand the question. Okay. So what you're looking at and for the benefit of the record, this is page 10 of the PDF. That is item number six in our agenda. So this is part of the town permit application that requires the applicant to check boxes Part of the town permit application that requires the applicant to check boxes. To indicate what their project includes. They have not checked. The box on that permit application for fences, there is a column that reflects whether a county permit. Is required in addition to a town permit and for the fence row. The town application says a county permit is possibly required, so that means if an applicant is seeking. A permit for a town fence, they're put on notice that they possibly need a county permit as well. That does not mean that this applicant is possibly doing a fence, if that makes sense.
Understood.
So I guess.
And and because that box is not checked, it's not part of this application, so there would be no approval for events. Going forward, if the applicant wanted a fence, they'd have to amend their request.
I guess we're wondering if there's no request for a fence, how are they going to mark? The end of their property and the beginning of ours?
Well, is there a question for the applicant?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sure. So uh so in reverse defense, yes, if that box is not checked and there's not. I can see that, as far as how we know things, where the things. Uh we actually have a series of surveys. That will be uh that we do, we actually do a perimeter survey where we'll be stakes. Uh we do a building line survey um throughout the building process. We uh do uh. Corners and pins for the actual outline of the house. At multiple times during footing, during uh boring of the basement walls and and what's called a break point, which is where the break sticks. So we are doing multiple surveys throughout this process for the. Location of the house and the property lining.
Okay. Um but let's assume.
Hey, can you?
Assume for the sake of this discussion.
Can you identify yourself? Oh, you already did, I'm sorry, your husband did.
Let's assume for the sake of this discussion that the property survey that was provided to us and now provided to the council members. Is accurate and that up to four, there is a wedge. That is gets as large as four feet at the back corner of the property. So we go back to our question, which is. How are you going to mark the end of your property?
Like where the boundary?
Yeah, the lot line.
So a a surveyor comes and actually marks with the stakes and pins off your property lines. That would be customary uh for both the starter project.
Of the stakes.
Yes, the stakes, stakes, those little wooden stakes.
Yeah. Okay.
Yes. A third question.
Excuse me, before you want to ask a question, no?
Right now.
No, okay, try.
Our third question is about trees and entrances. Dr. Feathers' memo dated October twenty eighth, twenty twenty four. The red oak on the west side of forty seven twelve sits on our shared lot line. We understand it should be removed and we'd like to be advised in advance when the tree when the tree when the tree removal will occur. And we'd like to know if the remaining stump will be removed.
We we will we will notify you and the stump is being removed.
Also, Dr. Feathers' letter says several trees are proposed for restoration. Exactly where these new trees need to be placed? We didn't see that any any clients.
Is there?
That that's up to the honor. Um we want to confirm a term mentioned on the building permit review comments submitted by Montgomery Consulting. Item A mentioned. Proposed house setbacks, the one I confirmed is the last site described as rear porch side actually refers to the rear deck in the builder's plans.
The the rear deck is on the back right side and and we call it a screen porch on the left, it's really part of the same structure always in the building. On.
There's nothing happening. There we have the screen porch again. There's nothing about the deck. And the the jump porch on our side of the plan. So the deck is on the forty seven fourteen side.
You're talking about here, right?
We're talking about there, the fence is stated as porch. That's our confusion.
Well, the screen porch is here.
Uh huh.
There is a deck. This is not.
And we're talking about right here.
Rear porch side, I would think that's the one.
And speak out to the tech. Um just wondering about what we're getting here.
What it's made of, I'm not sure. It's talking about this right here. Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to make sure that the parties were looking at the current plan instead of the. The site plan that Mr. Mayor has seen certainly doesn't reflect. The construction as reflected on the site plan, so you see on the proposed site plan, there is a gap.
Right, so right here is. This is.
The same with the three years and years being on the rear porch side.
Right, they say point three.
Not related.
Have the porch.
If you can't have multiple conversations going on, council members, council members, we cannot have.
Yes, we can. Yeah, you can.
Perhaps Mr. Lowmeyer will respond to the question since his report, Mr. Lowmeyer. On your report, you've listed the setback on the rear porch side as eight point three feet, could you explain that please?
Uh can you, I I'm not sure I understand the question, the site plan shows the face of the house will be eight four, eight point three feet. From the right side property line and the porch and steps are in line with that. House line, so it would be eight point three feet from the property line.
Yes, yeah, I I I believe that it appears to me that there's just a typo in the report. Doug, you used the term porch, but I think you're referring to the deck, the deck is set. Back eight point three feet from the side property line, not the screen porch.
Yes. Yeah, that is a typo, I'm sorry.
Thank you, sir.
That is, that should read deck.
And finally. Our understanding is no demolition may occur until the gas line share at forty seven twelve, forty seven fourteen is separated. And then we agree that it needs a separation. Washington Gas has told us this work could not be completed. So empty and summer state. Is that correct? And also that a permit had to be provided?
Yes.
Do you have that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so that can't happen until permit and.
So but this is not, that permit is not this permit, this would be a separate administrative permit from Washington Gas. Uh Washington Gas will send us an application separate from this. Uh that the town will look over and issue administratively, the council does not uh of uh. Utility disconnects are approved administratively, not by the town council.
You may want to.
So I guess we're trying to understand. Uh. If the disconnection. Will. We're trying to understand the process better, can you explain to us? How the disconnection will occur?
Yes, so um. In this case, it's a bit different since it is two homes, but basically. Washington Gas will need to since will will send me Somerset a permit. Saying that they want to disconnect the gas from forty seven twelve fall stone and they'll explain exactly on the permit like what that will involve, which will of course include. Temporary disconnection for forty seven ten fall stone, so once we get the permit, we'll reach out to both properties. So in this case and be like, here is the permit that they have submitted, is is accurate, do you agree to this? And then um. If it if it if it is, uh then we'll issue the permit and they can do it, but if it isn't, then we'll go back and say, well, the property owner said. Said something that doesn't align with what's in the permit, so we can't issue this permit.
Um also, we don't want to have a temporary disconnect of forty seven. Um twelve, not knowing when we're going to have our permanent connection from the gas company. Because we did hear from the subcontractor from the gas company who said, once that disconnect occurs. Washington Gas is in no hurry to put the new line in for us since they're not charged to us.
And that can be a condition of the permit is.
Okay.
The uh speedy, uh and we can even put a timeline on.
Right.
How quickly they have to permanently install it.
So what they also explained to us is that all of the work could occur at one time.
Yes.
And I guess that would be.
Hmm.
What we would want.
Yeah, okay, yeah, and we can make that a condition of the permit.
Yeah, so why don't you clarify that that's your request?
So we are requesting that, I I'm not sure how to word this, but.
You just said it, but just say it again, some people will hear.
We are requesting that when the disconnect occurs. That we receive a permanent new gas line, not a conditional or temporary gas line.
Right, yeah, and so and so once we get the permit, we'll make sure that that's part of it and then if it's not, we'll send it back and say, we're not going to approve a permit until. This condition is met.
Right.
So did you have any other questions?
Are there any questions?
I think councilor.
I have a question, I I didn't understand one thing.
Talking to the.
Sorry. Don't mind. Um are you saying that? Your fence. Is on their property?
No.
Their fence is on your home?
No.
Our fence is on our property, but the actual lot line is four feet over our fence.
Into their property.
So you, so some of their property is your property?
Correct.
And. So then my question would be. The size of their house, does that? Does that impact? Because their property is smaller.
No, the setback is not measured to the fence, it's measured to the surveyed lot line.
Okay, all right, we'll make sure of that.
Second question. Uh uh let me just run through everybody, council president, party have any questions?
I I don't have any questions.
Okay, councilor Kuhler.
Yes, um I also wanted to clarify something, so what you shared with us, a yellow highlighted section. Is a basically property that is yours.
Correct.
This is your property.
Correct.
That is currently up sitting outside the current fence that exists.
Correct.
Which is your fence.
Yes.
Okay, so so you you can see the natural clarification I'm going to see, why is your property sitting outside your fence?
Yeah, well, in previous owner erected defense, we don't know the answer to that question.
But you do know that it is your property.
Yes.
How do you know that?
Their survey.
Yes.
Okay, okay, then I have a follow up question to E J and and Steve, so we said we'll do a height check. And a wall check. Could we do a property line check? Could we reaffirm that those metal or uh wooden stakes are indeed placed? In accordance to the diagrams here and don't end up inadvertently. Making permanent what was an accidental fence, it sounds like.
I believe we could do that, yes, and then we could also uh the town attorney can correct me.
Yeah, I see.
Uh to make it a condition of the permit as well that.
That I don't understand how we would, but yeah.
The town code requires a boundary survey be submitted with an application, so it's my understanding that C P J. Have already provided that survey.
That was represented in the diagrams we have seen.
Correct, so page.
But in practice, could how do we ensure that there's no disconnect between the diagrams represented and what actually ended up ends up happening in practice, which sometimes. There can be a disconnect, which is, I believe, their concern. I'm hearing you, yeah.
Well, yes, let's see. I mean, I I. I believe the can the concern is the. Leaving sands want to make sure that the applicant understands there's additional property. On their side of the fence, on the applicant's side of the fence, there is property that belongs to the leaving sands according to the survey. And they asked, how can we confirm, how's the applicant going to confirm? That their construction is going on their own lot and Mr. Starkweather explained before construction starts, C P J is going to come out again and. And mark things with stakes to guide the construction.
I just want to make sure.
And there's no construction happening in that. That four point two foot sliver.
As said. I just want to make sure in practice, that's what happens, that's all I'm. Because I can imagine in practice.
It's not just what's said, it's also what is reflected on the plans, because no construction can occur. That is not reflected in the approved plans and the plans don't show any work happening in that sliver, if that makes sense. And I'm I'm pulling up the survey.
We're not connecting on it, but it's okay, that makes sense.
Well, I'm pulling up the survey now to see if C P J located. Iron rods in the corner.
Ron, can I add something?
Yes, of course.
Yeah, it it can be a condition of the building permit that C P, because there's a. A concern for that property line location, C P J would place stakes along the. A property line between the two houses to make sure that the contractors know where that property line is.
Okay.
We we have no problem with that being a condition because we do that. We don't, we don't count on fences being in the right place ever because in in our experience, they're not.
Understood, I mean. And then I had a, I'm I'm sorry, I had another one, on the gas line issue that I can imagine that can be unnerving if that doesn't. Play out properly. So you will receive uh E J from Washington Gas.
Yeah.
Washington Gas, as in if you will receive sort of when they will disconnect? Or will you receive a notice that they were to disconnect, what will you receive?
A permit, they they cannot disconnect without the town's approval.
So they will seek a permit from you.
So they'll.
Washington Gas.
Yeah.
And in that permit, they will lay out what they're going to do.
Yeah, and then I'll confirm with both properties that they're okay with the permit.
And so you will know the timeline, you will know when they're going to do it, but that will be information given and in your experience typically they follow that timeline?
Yeah, uh it's it's a range of time to be fair.
What is the range typically, days, hours, weeks?
Usually about a couple of weeks.
Couple of weeks. So they will show up in in a couple of weeks to this kind of.
Yeah, but I can also, I in the past, I've also been like, okay, the permit has a range on it, but. I I have I have that as a condition before you need to alert the town forty eight hours in advance, so you're also something like that.
Yeah, I think it might be good to narrow the window so it is forty eight hours seems reasonable.
And I've done that before, so that's no problem.
Okay, so that, so you will narrow the window in assessing that, do we need to make that?
Well, you can put.
Uh I mean, you can put it in motion, but this is. The utility disconnect is an administrative, so I can just write that down in my notes.
But we will need to be on top of it and you will need to inform us, oh, and so then there'll be a forty eight hours notice.
Yeah.
So it'll be within forty eight hours, so now that is the disconnect, both houses will disconnect.
Yeah.
So disconnect happens, the other concern was the reconnect happens.
Yeah.
How is that then mean known to you?
It's on, it's on the permit as well.
It's on the permit as well?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, so they will tell me when the reconnection will.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's another thing that we would need to know.
Yeah.
The timing of.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Council member Roback. Do you have any questions of the of the neighbors?
I just wanted to make sure that. So there's no variance needed, like the the setbacks on the side are done from the actual line, property line, not the fence. Right, I just wanted to clarify, I know there would have been an answer, but.
Is that you?
Yeah, that's it.
Councilor Connor. No further questions?
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who wanted to talk?
Yes, we have another in the same time.
Okay, I. Three pages long, okay.
I'm Lucy Haven, I live across the street at forty seven one nine Ballstone. So I'm right across the street from the from the house. I appreciate the effort of the council and. The the council staff and consultants, everyone is putting into setbacks and heights and storm water and landscaping. Uh I'm I would speak about my my concern that during construction, the. The Mid-Atlantic will be abiding by the laws and codes. And of the town, Somerset, and then there will be a tension in keeping the area tidy. So, uh, as many of you know, Mid-Atlantic put up an illegal sign. And, um, it is now, I think, behind the house, right? And then the vehicles were always parked on the incorrect side of the street. Now, uh, mostly they are not there, um, the garage door was open. And we thought a fox was living inside the garage. Well, all of these things have now been taken care of, but there's still the mess, so, um. But, but I.
Okay, so EJ is going to address that.
Yeah, oh, he's going to address the fox?
Whatever you want.
So I wanted to know, um, is the contractor aware of the town's hours of operation?
So, so.
What, let him answer, then you ask the, um, applicant.
Okay.
He first asks EJ.
Well, so.
Hours.
Let's, let's ask, let's ask EJ first, then ask.
So, uh, once, before we issue the permit, we will hold a pre-construction meeting with the contractors, with the applicants. And we go over all that stuff, it's me, it'll be Steve, it'll be our code enforcement officer. We go over hours of operation, noise regulations, um, we have a whole list, uh, we basically go over all of Somerset. For actual construction, uh, so they're aware.
Okay, thank you.
But now you want, now you want to ask the applicant?
Okay. Okay, so then, um, I'll ask you this, are you aware that there's no parking? On the side of the street that the house is on?
I would, I would be aware if that's something we're going to go over.
Yeah, that would be part of.
No, no, it's already there, people come and park there illegally.
I've been here for a couple of months.
But they're going to go.
I know.
Yeah, it's part of the meeting is parking regulations.
But it's, it's already approved, before they approved this. All the vehicles, vehicles are not supposed to be, there's a sign outside the house. That says, no vehicles parking on this side of the street.
It is, it is our intention on all the rules Somerset has to abide by the rules, to be respectful of the community. Um, it's our, we, 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 we build other houses based on reputation. If our jobs are tidy, people like to talk to us, so we try to, we try to do everything we can to.
Sir, let me just, uh, one important thing that we require is that. A sign be posted with the phone number that people can call twenty-four hours.
Yeah.
To address, uh, any of these concerns like Ms. Freeman has.
Which will be part of the.
So, so that law was enacted a long time ago, it's been very effective. And if not, you can be fined.
Gotcha.
A lot of people walk, you know, people and dogs walk on the sidewalk, uh, on your side of the street. On Fallstone, and, uh, and also usually in construction sites, the workers will sit outside and eat. And, and I wanted to be sure for the people and for the dogs, that there are chicken bones. Or wrappers or mess, correct?
I, I understand your, your concern, and actually with our, uh, with, when we hire contractors, we have certain rules. Trash and, uh, even if it's not part of the rules, trash and food, uh, trash especially, uh, are, are, uh. Enforced actually, and, and if we have repeated tender, then we have in with all those still, uh, as well. Correct information, so we actually, uh, take that seriously.
I, I believe, Mr. Town Attorney, that can be quite essay or. Is that correct? Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Well, and also partly is our permit, part of the code states that job sites must be clean and orderly.
But, but it can be added to the motion.
And then, uh, we've been talking about the Washington Gas and the shared line. And there also was a shared line of WSSC. And, and now, one day, I drove home and they're, they were working on separating that line, is that right? Yes, and they had the digger sitting in my driveway. So, you know, can you just let me know if a digger is going to be sitting in my driveway?
Well, and that would have been on WSSC.
Yeah, but they hired, they asked WSCs to do this.
Hmm, yes.
But it's up to us to enforce that.
Yeah, okay, that's what I meant to say.
Thank you, thank you.
Yes, uh, Kimar Vaswani, Chair of the Public Safety Committee.
Yes, thank you, um, I just have a few questions, um. I didn't see a planting plan in the packet, is there a planting plan?
There is not a planting plan that, that is something we discussed with our buyer and we will plan.
Because our code requires a planting plan for any new construction.
Yes, it does, um, the, the practical difficulties of the planting plan is in pretty much all cases. Um, the planting plan is done last, and is especially if the home, home is being built by. Uh, a company that's been being sold or to a different group or what, what have you, is they want to do their own planting plan. So this is actually a change in the code that I'll be bringing forward at the next work session is to update. One, what we mean by a planting plan, but also when in the process. Because before we close the permit, we will need to see, um, work beginning on a planting plan, but, um. We do have a, but also in terms of plantings, we do have a tree reforestation plan, which, um, and then. I can, attorney, attorney has anything to add, that's my end, but.
Yeah, why don't you clarify the difference between the tree replacement and the, and the planting plan, Mr. Town Attorney? Sure, Mr. Mayor, so when trees are removed. Or construction is occurring, the arborist will, will recommend a tree protection area. That tree fencing be put up to preserve trees, and if trees are to be removed, may make recommendations for reforestation. So that plan, the tree protection plan or tree forestation plan, is prepared for the. The limited purpose of showing what trees are proposed for removal, what trees need to be protected. And whether new reforestation trees need to be planted. The code does require a different plan called a planting plan for new construction. And that allows the council to confirm that no invasive species are being proposed. As part of the aesthetic landscaping. So, you know, absent that plan, I mean, the, the council could still impose a requirement. That the future landscaping not include invasive species. Okay, thank you, is there anything else?
So, so could.
Yeah, you have more questions, Mr.?
So, so could, could that be made a condition of the permit?
It can, yes, but just keep in mind that. That would only be a requirement during the period the permit is open. And once the permit is closed, you know, future owners can, can change landscaping. I don't believe we have a, a general prohibition as to planting invasive species, let me check that.
Well, while you're checking, could I ask, is the town right of way shown on the plans? Is it that dotted line that, uh, I'm looking at page five of the council packet? There's a roughly a dotted line that crosses the property near where the, uh. The driveway starts to spread out from ten feet to twenty feet, is that town right of way?
Yes, that, yes, uh, Chair Vaswani.
Mr. Serco answered, yes.
Oh, okay, thank you, so can I just ask the applicant, are there any plans to plant anything in the town right of way?
I don't, I'm sorry, I don't know.
Okay, I'm just asking because our town code prohibits. I think planting anything taller than twelve inches in the town right of way, and there have been problems with. You know, plants spreading out and overhanging the sidewalk, and I just wanted to make sure that. There wouldn't be.
It's customary for us to do a, a landscape or a planning plan, uh, before we do anything. And if you, if you want to make that a condition for what we do, and it's not, that's not a problem, that's a, that's a common thing to do. And that would show locations and, and species is what it usually, that, that we usually shows.
Okay, thank you, and I just have a couple of process questions. What's the role of the town manager in making recommendations on permits? Because previously, the town manager used to make a recommendation, and I noticed that now Mr. Hardwork is. No longer making those recommendations.
Yes, yeah, so recommendations are, in my experience. Uncommon for permit approvals. Rather than making a recommendation, the manager and hired consultants should just be reporting on whether the requirements are met. Because it's, it's an objective analysis, not a subjective analysis, so, you know, recommendations aren't needed. Except from the arborist with respect to the condition of trees and what reforestation should be compelled. And from the water drainage consultant as to whether ESD practices have been fulfilled to the maximum extent practical. But, you know, with respect to whether setbacks are met, it, it's. Somewhat of a misnomer to say, I recommend that this be approved because the setbacks are met, it's just, it should be, the setbacks are met, so the. The permit comply, the application complies with the code, doesn't require a recommendation, if that makes sense. Okay, Chair Vaswani, that, you're probably one of the few people that picked up on that, but that was the advice of the town attorney.
Hmm, yeah.
That subtle change.
Okay, okay, thank you, and then one final question about stormwater facilities, will, will there be a. Uh, maintenance and inspection agreement?
Yes, that's required by the code, and that has to be signed and returned before the permit can be issued.
And, and who inspects it?
So, the water drainage inspection and maintenance agreement authorizes the town to conduct inspections. I mean, as a practical matter, they may be complaint-based, if the town has reason to believe. A water drainage plan is no longer working, you know, because a drywall is compacted, or you know, what have you, and the town. Gets noticed that it's not working, then the town can exercise that right of entry and inspect. I don't believe that the town places properties on an inspection schedule, is that correct, Mr. Hardwick?
That's correct.
Well, my comment, I guess, is that these systems should be inspected. Like mandatorily, periodically. These systems are going to clog up, there's no, I don't think there's any question about that. When you look at that, that long pipe from the front right corner of the house, it goes, it takes like two or three sharp turns. To the infiltration pond, that's going to get clogged up, and I think there should be a requirement that it be inspected every. Year or so, or, you know, one year or two years or so. Just as a practical matter, these systems are going to clog up.
Okay, well, thank you for the testimony and the counsel, we'll take that consideration.
No, I believe.
Thank you.
Uh, apologize if I mispronounced this, but I believe Bobby Baggy wants to comment.
Yeah, hi, um, we are neighbors at forty seven ten, and we're not new to the process. We've actually, as many of you know, built this house that we live in, and we love this neighborhood, we've been here for thirteen years, going on fourteen. Um, one, one thing we were surprised about is that it, we did not get a detailed email that usually goes along with this process. Which, and we did not get any requests for signatures from the applicant. We did not get any, so we didn't get any of those permit requests, has something changed with the town's requirements and how things are done?
Yes, so, ten, uh, the code was, the change, the code was changed, so. Instead of the applicant receiving, um, going to the property owners and getting this physical signatures. Ten days before each year, uh, ten days before the hearing, uh, the town staff does, sends out a notice via email. And, uh, first-class US mail.
Oh, okay, well, I guess the thing is, and I'm sorry, I did, I had emailed you about that question, I guess you missed my email. I'm, earlier, I hadn't received that, I wouldn't have taken everyone's time with that, but the, what we did receive in the mail and, uh, is very limited. So we didn't have any money of much of this information until just listening, so this has been very helpful. Um, uh, my husband has some questions about the water runoff, because we have actually already had quite a problem with the current building. Which, as you know, the current footprint of the building is quite small, but we have had to put in some, several mitigating solutions for it. Which, um, so I'll, I'll defer to him since he understands the process a little bit more than I do.
Um, hi, uh, I'm Bobby Bagary, um, we're at forty seven twelve Fallstone, so we're on the forty seven ten, so we're on the east side of forty seven. Twelve, and we're actually, um, we are, uh, we are at a lower level than forty seven, uh, twelve. And, um, I guess our, the concern, main concern for us is the stormwater management. And, and I guess ma- maybe somebody in the council or, uh, the representative from Mid-Atlantic or the attorney can. Uh, help me understand, um, I thought that when you have a new build, you have, you're supposed to have more than one dry well. Uh, more than two dry wells, um, it isn't, it is, uh, we see here only two dry wells in the very back of the property. Um, and, uh, I know, uh, we see that there's the landfill, landscape infiltration system. Um, and I just want to know, is that, I guess, is the landfill infiltration system in lieu of extra dry wells?
Let's have the town attorney answer that. So, yes, and I, I, I think that Mr. Serco could probably provide a, a better answer, from, from a legal perspective. The code requires environmental site design be implemented first, that's a preferred method. So that's why the landscape infiltration system is proposed in the front corner. Drywalls, dry wells are actually not preferred by the town. And those are only used when environmental site design is not possible. Environmental site design generally takes up more area than structural practices. So sometimes an applicant can't fulfill the entire treatment volume with environmental site design. And I'm guessing that's why drywalls, dry wells have been proposed in combination with the infiltration device, but, you know. I'll turn my microphone over to Mr. Serco.
Thank you very much, Ron, uh, you, you captured that perfectly, that's, that, that's the case, our, our stormwater management. Let's say preference or priority on environmental site design practices that are. More natural as opposed to structural, and, and that's exactly what's been proposed. Um, except for this apparently spacing constraints that drove the use of dry wells in the rear of the property. Overall, even though this is a larger house. The stormwater management should result in less runoff going to your property.
Well, I, I, that'd be, that'd be fantastic, our, our end, I mean, I guess our only concern really is with the stormwater management. Is that, you know, this landscape infiltration design in the, in the front, uh, left of the property. Is located directly next to our property, and it actually is an area which. Sort of there's a depression which goes right into our, right to our property, and I just don't want to, you know, like. I just want to know from my perspective, like, I'm, I'm, I'm trusting the process and trusting you guys, hopefully this is going to work out. But if it doesn't, what, what do we do? What, you know, if we're flooded.
Well, let's, well, let's first ask the applicant to address that. And then, Mr. Town Attorney.
Yes, sir, I would say if the drainage doesn't work, um, I am, I, I would really want to defer to what. Mr. Bull has to say that, I don't know your processes or resolution.
Well. Would you, but are, are you at all willing to address that as the applicant to correct it?
Address that as the applicant to correct it and not let Mr. Attorney also.
Our, our intention is for everything to work and if things don't work, we, we, we give the, uh, uh, we typically get the. Um, CPJ involved. Give a recommendation for a solution. Who did not. As. As a. We, we get advice from the profession.
Yeah, but you were going to bu- build this house.
Hold on one second. With the town attorney, like, anything?
Um, I, I certainly can. I certainly can add, Mr. Mayor. I'm just pulling up the. The plans and. If the neighbors have not seen CPJ's plans, we can certainly. Email them. The last page of. Agenda item number six shows. A cut sheet for the proposed infiltration system. And. What you will see there is that the infiltration system is going to be. Uh, composed of. Sand, then gravel, another layer of sand, and then planting media. So I, I'm not an engineer, but I understand that this is done in order to improve. The infiltration, improve it. From what exists currently, because sometimes soil contains clay and, and doesn't infiltrate. As quickly as. A. Infiltration facility such as this would. And so where the town's authority. Begins and ends is really a question of what is approved. As a condition of this permit. And so in the past. You know, what I've said is the town has the authority to enforce the. Stormwater drainage inspection and maintenance agreement that the applicant will sign, that we will record in land records. So it's enforceable in perpetuity. But, you know, enforcement is. For the continued. Functioning of the approved device. So if, if the device. It becomes clogged, you know, there are gutters and downspouts feeding into this. If, if something gets. Gets clogged in the feeders, then, you know, that's something the town can enforce. Uh, if, if it just doesn't work. From an engineering perspective, that, you know, and we figure that out twenty years from now, that's not something that would be within the scope of the agreement for the town to compel. The town at that point couldn't compel. A new system. Now, however. Common law does provide that. Stormwater is allowed to flow. Downhill, but if an uphill owner. Captures the water and channels it unnaturally to a neighbor, then a private cause of action for alteration of the. Natural flow and, and nuisance exists. I know that's not a. You know, a comforting answer. Just to state that, you know, if from an engineering perspective, this doesn't work, that you might have a private cause of action. It might be a neighbor to neighbor issue.
But that's our point is that, I mean, we understand ultimately. That's the route is probably going to go, but. We just want to, um, uh, you know, you're having this meeting. We just want to voice our concern. That, you know, this is our major concern. We are the, we are the. Down, uh, downstream adjoining property. We are putting all of our trust into your hands, into the hands of, I mean, I know the, the Mid Atlantic, they just said right now, they don't even have their own in-house. Uh, engineers for this matter. So we're trusting some other, you know, somebody they're subcontracting with. And, you know, just, this is just very thin, you know, very thin, uh, um, um. Uh, comfort for us, you know, so we're putting all of our trust in you guys that this water is not going to come in and, uh, and flood our house.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't know if the, if it would help or if the council would like, maybe Mr. Circo could run through. You could take a look at what's the volume of water that's being fed to that trench. Um, versus today. And. You know, not all the water from the site is going to that trench. The. The, the rear facade is going to be. Conveyed to those two rain tanks. So, you know, perhaps Mr. Circo could.
The dry.
Well, I, I know, uh, it's, it's unfair to Mr. Circo because this is a question for Bayland, but. Steve's one of the smartest people in the town, so that's why I'm kicking it to him.
And before Steve comments, I just want to add too, that the stormwater plan was designed by a group called CPJ Associates, which is. A local company based in Silver Spring that at this point has done multiple stormwater plans for the town. So, um. Obviously, each house or each property in each section of the town is different, but this is a company that is familiar with the town and has worked with the town before.
And E J, can you put page twenty? Up on the screen so everybody can see.
That's, that's good, yeah.
Oh, I was just gonna say, I'd be happy to meet with you at, at, at your convenience to sort of walk through the site. Uh, and the drawings of the. Of the stormwater retention devices, just so maybe you can better visualize what's going to be built.
Yeah, great. Yeah, that, that's our, our, you know, our main overarching concern is the stormwater management. Uh, and then as my wife, uh, previously mentioned, we, we only got the. Site plans, the four-page site plans. We, we didn't, any other documentation. Other documentation, since part of the joint. Property would be very useful. The other comment we had was that, um, and I think Dr. Tolbert already mentioned it. There's this very tall pine tree. In the, um, in the back, uh, if you're looking at the site map right now, in the back left-hand corner. And this, this pine tree looks like it's about to tip over any day. It's either going to fall. On, on, uh, either our house or house you're building or fifty-five twenty-eights. And it, it unloads just ton, just pounds and pounds of needles all over our property, uh, which clog up our. Um, our drainage, our, our, uh, gutters. And, uh, it's a huge problem. And, um, you know, I, 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 you know, Dr. Tolbert mentioned that. It's to be removed, but, uh, that's an, an other issue is that. Um, and then, uh, the third, what, what was our third issue, uh, suite was, uh, the third issue was going off with the people from, um. Uh, the people at four fourteen Fallstone said about their property. And about their fence and the issue with. The fence and the property line, their property line. Uh, we had the exact same issue with, uh, forty-seven twelve. Um, and, uh, we had a fence. Uh, there was a fence and there was also the issue of where the property line was. Uh, so they, they had the same answer right now that they gave forty. Uh, uh, forty-seven fourteen that they're going to send out the surveyor and stick some, uh, you know, stick the, uh, markers in the ground. The only, the only problem was, is that their survey was wrong. Um, not by much, but it was still not accurate. It was not completely the same survey that was originally plotted when this, when the Somerset was first developed. We had to, we had to have a, a little back and forth. I don't know if, uh. Mister, um, Mister Starkweather is, uh, aware of that because he's new, new to his position right now. It was probably with this, the previous, uh, person in his position. But, um, uh, you know, it's just something to be aware of, uh, you know, uh, of, of where the property line is. Um, and even if the surveyor comes out, you have to first take a look to see if the survey is actually accurate. He's going to put the surveyor lines down where. The survey, uh, you know, survey says, but if the survey is wrong, then you're just going to have, uh, markers in the wrong place. So, uh, to, uh, whoever lives at forty-seven fourteen, uh, I would just, uh, uh, be aware of that.
Okay, uh, did you have any other questions or comment?
One last question. The height. Is it higher than what the average, what the expected height is for Somerset now? Cause I know that, I thought that. Um, the town brought the height limit down a little bit. You know, we now have this one next to us on Trent. That is, you know, the, first of all, I'll give kudos to the construction crew. They never bothered us. It was the cleanest construction site. Uh, except for the first nail that both my mother and I got in our tires, but after that, very clear. Um, but. Is that the height on this building is so high compared to. The lot size and overpowering looming over our house. What is the height? I just want to make sure the height on this forty-seven twelve proposal is, is same?
Yeah, um, it's, it's close to the limit. The, the, the town reduced the, uh. The maximum lot heights for new construction. In the last year or so. In the county, the maximum peak height is thirty-five feet in our sixty subdivision like we have in Somerset. At Somerset, we just have thirty-three feet. And off the top of my head, I believe that this house is. Uh, intended to be thirty-two point nine one, uh, uh, feet. So.
You're, you're exactly right.
Yeah, very close.
Trent next to us at that thirty-two feet or is it?
It's, they, they should also be under thirty-three feet, uh, at fifty-five twenty-eight Trent.
Yeah, it is, it is actually, it looks obnoxiously high for that small lot. I'm just going to put my personal.
Wasn't that Trent House?
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Did you have any other, um, comments or questions?
Yeah, so I was hoping, what you were going to start right now, I was hoping that that Trent House was the last house that went with the highest height and that this one was going to be. A lower height is what I was hoping the town was going to tell me today.
I, Councilman Roback sort of corrected me. She, she believes that it was, um. It was approved before the new law came into place. I, I just can't recall.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else? Okay, so now, um, Mr. Starkweather, you have an opportunity for a rebuttal. And what I would suggest you do is to try to address all of the concerns of our race and how you're going to. Comply with those requests.
Well, for now, period. Um, I, I had no particular problem with, uh, any of your. Any of your less than any of the things you put on us. Um, and I think, uh, it, it'd be wise for all of us in the room, including our company, to take your concerns to heart. And, um, so I have. I think the discussion was very valid and very constructive. I appreciate the time. So I have nothing specific to.
So sorry, before you leave, so you removing that big tree in the corner lot, the one that's Dr. Tolbert did recommend to remove, the big pine tree that's nearly dead?
Yes, that's, that's on the plan.
It is on the plan for removal. Okay. And with the stump as well?
Yes, we removed the stumps.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, everyone. Now I'm going to close the public comment period of the hearing and the record is now. Uh, is that what you want? Okay, uh, okay, there's been a request. Council president, party have any questions?
I, I, I. Some statements to make, but I, I mean, does anyone?
No, this is just a question.
Does anybody have any questions?
No, 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 no. Do you have any questions?
I have no questions.
Okay, do you have any questions of the, of the neighbors? Council member.
Of the applicant.
No, the neighbor.
It's the neighbor. He's requesting of the neighbors.
Quick question for the neighbors. Just want to clarify, did you receive an email from the town?
They did. Email from the town, but it seems like we didn't have any of the details. We just had. A few pages of a site plan, but we didn't have any details. We didn't have any, like what the forty-seven fourteen was talking about. Checkboxes for proposals of fence, not fence check, not that. We didn't receive anything like that. And traditionally in the past, we'd seen things like that. That's why I was confused.
And so then follow up for E J. Did they not get that?
They, they received, um, this notice, they said, received the notice. Uh, which included the forty-seven twelve Fallstone plan and the forty-seven twelve Fallstone stormwater management plan. That was included in the notice.
So they got what all the neighbors?
Yes, yeah.
That's all we received. We did not receive any details in terms of what they were talking.
Did they receive like Doug's memo or Tolbert's memo?
Which you wouldn't send to the other neighbors?
No, they, they got exactly what everybody else received.
Okay, cause like forty-seven fourteen had a list that they were going through with what was required, requested, the plans for the fence, not fence. Check mark, check not. We didn't have, and we do not have a proposal. We don't have their application. Application sent with the proposal. We do not have an application from the applicant.
So the, the, the town's current practice, which is consistent with the practice amongst my other clients. Is to send out a notice of the application with just one or two documents. Usually it's. Just the site plan, but then the notice to the neighbors says, if you want copies of everything else. You know, call the town hall and arrangements can be made to provide. The, the rest of the documents. But we just, the initial outreach, it's usually just. Here's when the hearing is going to be and this is the site plan.
And then I had a quick other follow-up. Uh, while we put in, are you satisfied with the answers you've got on the stormwater management right now? Or do you still have outstanding questions on that one?
I mean, no questions that I can think of. Um, you know, a, any, but any other information that, you know, the. The builder could provide us. You know, definitely most welcome.
I mean, I think one of our concerns is what, um, the other gentleman, also Mr. Kumar Waswani rec- recognizes that that. That pipeline, the way it's going and making those angles, I mean, it doesn't take that, it just seems like it's just ready to get. Plugged, right? So that's something that makes you wonder, yeah, maybe this could pass the inspection the first time around, but once it actually gets into full use, is it really going to? Stayable and is it really going to be? You know, something that's really going to provide us with what we need. Uh, so it would be nice if they would have some kind of a. Some, I mean, right now we're going on good faith that, yes, even once they build the house, they're still going to, you know, but this house is under contract. By the builder to a private person and it's going to close the contracts, because they're going to, you know, build the house and they're going to give them the key. So I don't think. Anyone's going to come back and look at the store, stormwater management, right? That with this funny angle like. I mean, the angle looks funny. That what he made, he made a really good point about that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, Councilor Roback, do you have any questions? Has or a comment with the questions?
Okay, thank you. So, um. This completes the public comment period of the hearing and the record is now closed and I will turn it over to the council president to deliver a. The. Findings of fact and conclusion and possibly make a recommendation.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'm going to start by. Getting a little background on our town code before we move into discussion here, because I had a lot to do with. Developing the town code this time around. Until around about two thousand and twelve. Um. Homes were built on the principle of water be gone. In other words. The important thing was for the water to flow away from the home and that's all that, that homes were required to do. The house that's on Fallstone at the moment, that was the plan when that was constructed. So it sent the water away and it sent the water away a lot of it to your yard next door downhill. Since about two thousand and twelve. The county and the state have changed to mitigating stormwater runoff on the property. Rather than running off. So homes built since two thousand and twelve. Do much better at capturing stormwater than homes built before two thousand and twelve. So all the new construction that's happening in Somerset, though it's bigger homes. They are actually capturing the water better than the smaller homes that they're replacing. We ourselves were unhappy with the county code. It wasn't good enough for us, so we built an even tighter code ourselves. So our code is one of the tightest in the county and in fact. The way it's built now is that regardless of the soil type. The builders have to capture a one-year storm event, which is two point six inches of rain. That is a lot of rain. On the property. That's what they're building to. These particular builders are actually building to more than that. They are actually capturing more water than we require. So if it works. It's going to help you a whole lot at. Forty-seven twelve. Um, it is almost certainly going to work because the landscape infiltration in the front is one big hole. And the water will flow into that hole. At some point, yes, the drain pipes will get blocked and maintenance is required. Maintenance is always required. And that's, that's inevitable, but it will certainly work, um, at, at, at stormwater. All right, I'll stop there. And go on. So council, do we have questions on this application? What we want to? And go on. So council, do we have questions on this application? What we want to see in the final approval? Do we want a planting plan in the final approval? Yeah, well, who wants to start?
Do we usually do that?
Usually they show a planting plan. This one does not show a planting plan because we still have to talk to the owners to be who live in Somerset actually.
I think a number of things that could be resolved on this. I just feel I'm struggling with.
So you don't want to approve it as is?
I think we need to have, it would be nice to have the engineer here, frankly, from their team. I think we have at least one neighbor that did not get to, you know, deal with the plan in a proper manner and have real questions potentially, the neighbor that come back the most. And and we still have, I think, these questions on the other neighbor side. You know, and it seems like the applicant, the the builder is amenable to addressing these concerns, but feeding the details not exactly interested, so.
All right, so you would like to see it come back. Okay, where are others on it? Debbie?
No, I don't. I don't think it needs to come back.
Okay, Shannon?
So is there is there a tree reforestation plan?
Yes, there is.
We have that. We just don't have the planting plan, which is a landscape, landscaping, but like the the water infiltration system, the landscape infiltration, we do have.
No, we we have, yeah, it's gonna be water infiltration system, but the plants that will go in that, we don't have.
Oh, the plants that go on top of it?
Yeah.
But isn't part of that landscape infiltration plan, like they should be water absorbing plants?
Well, they should be native plants, yeah.
Native plant?
Yeah.
So.
Noninvasive.
Okay. That's that's all my comment.
Right, and Roback?
Yeah, no, I also think we have enough to take a decision today. I think I think no outstanding issues for me. For me, there are just a couple of things that I don't know whether they need to be in a decision or not, but one is just on on, I want to just reiterate the point that Lucy Freeman made. The house is on the no parking side. That means that when trucks come for delivery of supplies and material, they will be parked on the no parking side for some period of time just to unload everything. I doubt that everything's gonna fit in that little driveway over there. So my request would be that if you know the dates on which some big trucks are coming to deliver and they're gonna have to be on the street, that notification be provided twenty four hours in advance to the town manager. So the town manager can send out a message.
Well, you can put that in me. You can put that.
Yeah, just send a message to the town resident saying that on date X, Fallstone Avenue between this block and that block is gonna be closed.
You can put that in me.
So that's that's one. Second is, I just wanted to reiterate the point that Kumar Waswani made. We don't have a planting plan here, but certainly the new trees, the landscape infiltration system, any other plantings must not be in the town's right of way. So maybe we'll come back to the planting plan later, but I just want to put it out there now so that we don't have a whole lot of waste of time later on having to send it back.
We can we can.
It it can, Mr. Mayor, and I've made some notes of possible conditions perhaps to aid the discussions. I could read those off right now. The council could decide whether they wanted to add or subtract in any potential motion.
Is anyone prepared to make a motion and with the assistance of the?
Well, I'll I'll make a motion to approve the permit application submitted by Jeff Starkweather on behalf of Atlantic, the property forty seven twelve Fallstone, demolish the Chrisney House and construct a new house.
But do you want do you want these conditions to be?
Yes, I I want to hear the conditions.
Let's hear your conditions.
Implementation of a tree protection plan and reforestation requirements as recommended by the town arborist. Execution of a water drainage maintenance agreement before a permit is issued. Prior to construction, a surveyor will confirm the property boundaries and install corner markers. Project site must be kept reasonably clean and tidy. A landscaping plan must be submitted prior to the installation of plantings and must not include invasive species or plants with a mature height of over twelve inches within town right of way.
All right. Is there is there anything else anyone wants to add to Council President Barr's motion?
I ask you, what was the water maintenance? You mean maintenance? Don't we have that in the code already that they have to maintain their systems?
Yes, this condition was just that the agreement be executed before a permit is issued. It's that's already required by the code, but I like to mention it on the record, just so administratively. I remember to give that agreement to EJ and EJ remembers to have the applicant sign it.
Do you want us to put it into the motion or not?
No, it's not necessary.
Okay, so is so that's your motion? That's your?
My motion minus the water maintenance.
Okay, there's second.
You what?
So, yeah, that would be that in coordinating the WSSC disconnection.
And Washington gas.
I'm sorry, Washington gas will require that a permanent line and not a temporary line be installed to serve the Leebus Sands lot.
And that the permit would not be issued without a forty hour notice.
Did did, sorry, did you mention Roback's concern that twenty four hour notice be given of traffic truck?
I actually wanted to say something about that. Having renovated a house, I think it's unrealistic. Sometimes these guys just, it's their day and they show up and they and the contractor does it.
Well, why don't you debate that if it's in there?
Okay, well, I don't.
So so you're, okay, but it's it's Council President Barr's.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can someone repeat the full?
So hold on, is there anything else that you want to let them add to your motion?
No, I think we've got it all. Well, no, yes, right.
Okay, so, Mr. Town Attorney, why don't you repeat all of the conditions that are in Council President Barr's motion? And then you'll be able to debate it if somebody's.
Okay, yeah, I did not add a a traffic control condition. The code currently provides it's not permissible to block a street during construction unless notice is provided with the town prior to blocking. Blocking is not for an unreasonable period of time. The mayor or his delegate approves the blocking and the individual blocking the street has persons positioned at both ends. But, you know, if we wanted to do something special, we could add to that.
Just make reference to that.
Okay.
All right, that sounds like the code had that.
The motion would be to approve the application, subject to the following conditions: implementation of a tree protection plan and the reforestation requirements recommended by the town arborist. Prior to construction, a surveyor will confirm the property boundaries and install corner markers. The project site shall be kept reasonably clean and tidy. A landscaping plan must be submitted prior to installation of plants and not include invasive species or plants with a mature height of over twelve inches within the town right of way. In coordination of the gas disconnect, the manager will require a permanent line and not a temporary line serving the Leebus Sands lot.
And a height check and a wall check.
Forty hour notice for the gas.
So height and wall check is already in the code and you said forty eight hours notice?
Yeah, I understand that you can issue the permit if they stipulate a forty hour notice.
For what?
For Washington gas.
I don't know why that should be in this.
Well, hold on.
It's illustrative.
Well, and as a practical matter, can you get Washington gas to agree to that?
It's happened before.
This one seems like it's worth pushing, but.
I mean, maybe we could, you could word it as, you know, the manager will endeavor to get Washington gas to provide forty eight hours notice, but 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 would we want to turn him away and then not have him be available for another month?
But I don't think it belongs in this. I think I think EJ is gonna handle that and make it happen. Because that's his job. I think he will make it happen.
But I but I think the language about endeavor endeavor is covers all your concerns. Will never, all right, yeah, I think that'll cover all your concerns. So so is everybody clear on what the motion is or the conditions? Okay, is anybody prepared to second?
Somebody second my motion, please.
Okay, so is there discussion on the motion?
They were all too tired.
Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Fine.
All those opposed? Excellent.
That's unanimous.
Congratulations. Thank you, everyone, for your outstanding input. And now the burden is on the town staff to make sure that all of the concerns are addressed. The next the next item is consideration, public hearing consideration of a recommendation by the town manager on the proposal submitted by Avari GIS Consulting in an amount of nineteen thousand four hundred dollars for pedestrian scale lighting consultation services, Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So in the budget for this FY is pedestrian scale lighting consultant. This is kind of a successor project to the LED streetlight conversion. How to look at pedestrian scale lighting. An RFP was issued at the beginning of February. It posed a theme in February. The town received three bids, Avari GIS Consulting, CECA LLC, and what's LED LLC. In the memo, I kind of do over quickly the three particular their self-described scope of work and then their costs. So my recommendation for this project is to submit, is for the council to approve the proposal submitted by Avari GIS Consulting.
Are they living here?
Yeah. Yeah, the primary reason for this is cost is it is the only one within budget and it's not even close. It's, I was very confused about the price difference between this proposal and the two others. And I reached out to the two others and I couldn't get quite a straight answer on the reason. And but also, even with the cost being so much lower, I was impressed by the fullness of the RFP. Meeting R, where it's really outlining what they'll do for Somerset with examples of what they've done in other municipalities. And previous references, the contacts we would be working with and then making sure that they would confirming that they would abide by our ADI, ADA and DEI requirements. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Council President. Barr, do you have any questions?
I'll I'll just help EJ a little bit there. I had a look at all three proposals, EJ, and the other two have no experience with streetlights. And you can see that in their actual budget request because they vastly overestimated the time it takes to do an assessment of the streetlights. And one of them thought it would take seven days and we've got a hundred and eighty streetlights. If it takes a day, it'll surprise me. The Avari has experience of doing streetlights, and that's why their budget's much lower because they understood how long it takes to take street assessments, so they budgeted much less for it. So it makes perfect sense to go with Avari. They're the only ones with experience. That's what it falls down to.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Helen. Give any questions?
No.
Councilor Kumar?
No questions.
Councilor Roback?
Can I go last?
You'll pass. Councilmember Connor?
No questions. I I I'm I'm I agree with Robin that there's a reason why, you know, one is so much cheaper than the other and it shows in the proposals. I have three particular things on which I want, I would like to have clarity from the town manager. One is, I think we should, we we need to ensure that if if it is Avari or anybody else who has this contract, they shouldn't repeat any previous inventory. And I think we should be able to share what we have done with them. If that requires some change in the scope of work or whatever, then I hope that's incorporated. Second, I think we need to be very clear, because I don't know how clear it is to the proposals, that we're not intending to do anything with the existing streetlights. We're not, you know, we're not gonna add, we're not gonna change anything. We're not gonna change the light fixtures. And so we're talking very specifically about pedestrian scale lighting. It's nothing to do with the existing streetlights. We've gone through enough on that.
But we will make sure before the contract is signed, that's clarified.
And then third, also just on the scope, that this is really for the sidewalks only. We're not talking about the pool parking lot and the town hall parking lot and the school library and so on and so forth. Because I don't know, they look at a whole map and they, I don't know how they developed their proposal, what's in their minds, but I think we should be clear that that's what we're talking about is.
Well, again, we'll make sure that that's also.
That's, those are just my comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Roback, do you have a question?
Well, I guess like, so, I mean, the streetlights are done, you know, and the streetlights are there and all of that. I guess my question is, do we really need a consultant? I mean, can we just do like, you know, like light up the sidewalks?
Well, why don't you, why don't you bring that up when you're debating whether to approve this? But do you have any specific questions about the contract?
Oh, I don't have any questions specifically about the contract.
Okay, thank you. Are there any comments or questions? Is anyone in the, anyone in the audience?
Okay, could I actually just ask EJ to check with Avari if they're gonna look at solar lights as a possibility for these?
Mr. Chair, do you have questions?
Yes, I do. Thank you. I don't did was Council President Barr's question answered? I didn't.
Yes.
Okay. Um, I just have a couple of questions. So will there be a separate contract apart from this proposal? Or is the proposal the contract?
Well, the proposal is the scope of work. The contract is prepared by the town attorney. The actual contract.
But there's an option beyond this, though, isn't there, that do we have to approve the option separately?
Yes.
Okay, so there's really two parts?
Yeah.
Well, well, okay, will there be any opportunity for council members or the Public Safety Committee to review that contract?
That's usually what this kind of part of the process is, but if the council slash Public Safety Committee would like to take that extra step, I'd be happy to facilitate that.
Yeah, that there's that's that's a problem to refer to if nature.
Okay, thank you. And I'm just curious, this is a question for the town manager. Did you call the the references? And get?
Yes.
Okay. Um, did you get the idea that this company is has experience actually designing pedestrian scale lighting? Because when I read their proposal, every project that they worked on really had to do with upgrading streetlights.
Yeah, the kind of, I guess, summarization of the various references they gave was that this is an extremely knowledgeable lighting company, whether it be streetlights or pedestrian scale lighting, and they were very happy with their work.
Right, EJ, also I noticed that one of their projects is particularly for a high street in a town, which obviously would meant for pedestrians, so they have some experience at that level. Obviously, most of their work is general streetlights, including Pittsburgh.
Is that, do you have any further questions?
Just one other question. Will we be defining the key intersections because they talk about studying key intersections? Is that something that that you will define, Mr. Town Manager, or?
Yes. I can see you what I considered the key intersections.
We can debate those.
Yeah, and the council can debate them.
Okay. A question?
Okay, thank you. That's it. That's all I have. Thank you.
So, Council, I would like to suggest that there's a lot of outstanding questions here, and usually it's better when contracts like this are voted on if the vendor is here. So unless this is urgent, I would recommend that this be tabled until the next meeting. But that's, yeah, now I'm asking for a motion, and that's the motion I suggest, but it's up to you.
All right, try that one. We'll move to table to our meeting for a second. All right, try that one. We'll move to table it to our main meeting. Is there a second?
There's no second? Okay, okay, all right, try something else.
Sorry.
Okay, um, so let's try to gather the questions. Um, so obviously I had my question about if you're going to consider solar. Um, what other questions, Tyler?
I think they, you covered the ground, and you know, it seems, seems like this is all which will be the gap in our writing, it means for taking us out of this.
But do you think we really need a consultant? I mean, I I don't understand what they're going to do. Like, what if we just put the money towards like, you know, I think um, Mr. Vaswani said like a, you know, like a door set, like, you know, street sample, like. I mean, what's a consultant going to tell us?
All right, uh, we have dark spots in town, first of all, and the question is, would pedestrian scale lighting be sufficient to cover those dark spots, or do we need new posts that will host LED lights? That's one thing that's real. Second thing that's real is the solar issue. I've heard two sides of solar. One is that they're wonderful and and you don't need Pepco and they're marvelous and they're sustainable and they're very environmentally friendly and, you know, all these wonderful things. And the other thing I've heard about them is the batteries don't last for the night. So the question is, can, are there solar lights that will work on the pedestrian scale where they can be turned down so that they don't use so much power, so that they are only on for seven hours, because that's all that's needed? I don't know, a lighting consultant will know that.
You think that paying someone nineteen grand to like tell us that is, I mean?
I don't know about the price, but I doubt we have expertise to determine where to place these lights. You know, and so that's my impression is we need someone who can do this objectively. I don't know if it's worth ninety thousand dollars practically. I don't know. But you ran across us as a competitive bid.
These guys are real bargain compared to the others.
Yeah, these are a real bargain compared to the others and sounded like appropriate expertise. I just don't think we have the expertise here.
But but again, that's why I think you need to have the vendor here, because there's so many outstanding questions.
No, I mean, we're also paying a ton for Dewberry, which I mean, I know this isn't their scope, but like they're doing our sidewalks and all that stuff. And that is a really expensive contract. Like, can't they give us any recommendations?
No, they're not lighting, yeah.
I'll also just comment that for the council discussion, um, the FY twenty twenty-five budget has twenty thousand dollars budgeted for.
Well, I remember that. We approved it, you know, and I think that we, this was supposed to be the next phase of making sure there aren't dark spots. There are, there are truly dark spots. There are folks that, you know, in the fall, it becomes a real problem, you know, in the fall months. I mean, it's what?
But they're dark. Well, I mean, I guess they're dark.
We fixed the streetlights, we upgraded them, and then we still have dark spots after that. So this is our next phase to try and minimize that. I suspect you'll still have problems after that, but you'll be better than I would have.
Yeah, I mean, I think I mean, I I share Kabir's point that I don't know if there's any of us around the table who would know what to tell. Let us say we said we wanted to have pedestrian scale lighting installed. This is the contract we're looking for. And the the company that says you want them installed will say, where do you want them? I will say, well, Dorset. Why did you pick Dorset? Why did you pick Dorset? And you say, well, because some of us walked it and it looked. I mean, I think that's, I think that, you know, it requires a technical assessment and uh it's not, I, each one of us has our view of what is a it dark, where it's dark and where the problem is. But I think it requires a technical assessment of where these should go, how many are required. I mean, again, if if you put out a contract to put pedestrian scale lighting, they're going to say, how many posts do you want? You say, well, you decide. You say, well, we're just putting these things in. You tell us how many you want. Now we don't even know how many we need. Same thing, I think none of us knows what kind of technology is best for our town. What kind of lighting will ensure that it's really focused down at the um, I think this is the role of this consultant to give us the parameters of design that then we go out and bid to do. Um, to me, it doesn't make any sense to go straight to a contractor and say, hey, build out pedestrian scale without us knowing at all whether they should be solar, not solar, battery, no battery, face up, face down, face sideways. How many wattage, what kind of lighting it should be? None of us can answer this question.
Okay, so it sounds like you're prepared to make a motion. Are you prepared to make a motion?
Yeah, make a motion.
Make a motion.
And make a motion to uh
Approve.
To approve um the proceeding with the contract for this proposal.
In the amount? Okay, is there a second? Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Okay, we just had two introductions which should not take very long. The first is introduce an ordinance to adopt a budget fiscal year July twenty-one to June twenty twenty-six and to levy a tax on certain real and personal property under the provisions of a section six two oh three of the tax property under the Maryland code. Now, Mr. Town Attorney, does this have to be voted on?
It will be voted on at the main.
No, 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 which is, is the introduction?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, who's going to move it?
I move that we introduce our budget resolution for the following year.
Second, is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? The next is.
I just thought the residents would debate this for a month.
We really vote on it next month, okay? Next month is where the act.
It wasn't debated. Okay, the next item, introduce the Public Safety Committee's recommendation to install extra stop signs, stop ahead signs and ladder stop crossroads that come along.
He's almost ready to make a motion.
To introduce it.
I I'll introduce it, Rob, if you're busy. All right.
Okay, so wait a minute. The problem with this is that there's no con, there's no dollar amount, and so we'll have to work on it. Okay. All those in favor? Okay, thank you.